All right, this is the regularly scheduled Town and Nantucket Board of Appeals meeting, Thursday, July 13th, 2017. Can I get an approval to, a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Sure, I'll make that.
Okay. Lisa makes the motion. Is there anybody who wants to second that?
A second.
We'll defer to Susan on that one. And is there any further discussion? No, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
What about the minutes of June 8th, 2017? I read them, they looked okay to me.
I didn't have an issue.
Okay. So, will somebody make a motion to approve as written?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Somebody want to second that?
I can do it.
She seconds it. Any further discussion? No. All is in favor, say aye.
I see it's a co-star.
Okay. So, we're on to old business. Forty-one sixteen Lyndon Mason, twenty-three Montemoy Road. They would like to request a withdrawal without prejudice. So, Mr. Bodett isn't here, doesn't need to be. Does anybody, we all remember this one in Montemoy?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, Michael's not really sitting here.
Nor am I.
Nor is, okay. So, any reason not to grant the relief? I mean, grant the withdrawal without prejudice? No? Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
A second.
Is there anybody in the audience who's here to speak to that one? No. Okay. So, the motion's been made to allow the applicant to withdraw without prejudice. And you seconded it, Susan? Okay. Any further discussion? No. All is in favor, say aye. Need a pen?
I have a pen.
Okay. So, that passed unanimously. Okay. So, we're on to new business. Sixteen seventeen Gerald Hamelberg, Barbara Hamelberg, trustees of Erkim Realty Trust, nine Davis Lane for the applicant.
Mr. Chairman, Sarah isn't here yet, so.
I see that.
I'm interested in this case, but presumably she's on her way. But before that, I have a request for a continuance that perhaps you could take out of order in order to.
Sure. Where is that?
Deal with it now on twenty seventeen, three Wall Street.
So, we're not, not quite on sixteen seventeen yet. We will come back. Okay. So, twenty seventeen, Arthur I. Reed, Jr., trustee, rein, three Walsh Nominee Trust, three Wall Street. You would like to continue this to August 10th?
Yes.
Two thousand and seventeen. It's okay with me.
It's fine with me.
Fine with me.
All right. So, is anybody in the aud, did anybody in the audience come to speak to that? Or this one? No. Three Wall Street? No. Okay. So, will someone make a motion to continue?
I'll make that motion to continue.
To August 10th?
Mm-hmm. A second.
Two thousand and seventeen, Susan seconds it. Any further discussion? No. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Well, I also.
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Presume that Arthur's on her way.
Sarah.
I mean, Arthur, Sarah. Arthur's on her way. That didn't make a lot of sense.
I know that sort of thing is trendy these days, but I haven't gone that route.
There's no time like the present, Arthur.
Speak for yourself.
All right. Is Patricia here? Oh, right there. My eyesight is failing me. So, do you mind going out of order?
No.
Okay. So, seventeen seventeen, William J. Richards and Gary McBurney, Sixth Gardner Road for the applicant. It's all state.
Have you, um, just, our survey.
I don't know what footage it is.
We're here to, um, we intend to demolish the existing shed and replace it with a new one with ground cover ratio of not more than two hundred square feet. To refresh your memory, we were here in 2012 when the applicant's bought the property and the house, they were over the ground cover, it was supposed to be seven percent, and we were at seven point four. And we came in and got some permission to do some further additions to increase the ground cover ratio even more, but there was some indication that we were not allowed to have a shed on the property without further approval from the board. And at the end of the day, on our construction projects, as you can see on the survey, we actually came in slightly under seven percent. So, we're at seven point nine nine. And now they'd just like to have the two hundred square foot shed that's now allowed under zoning, not having the ground cover.
The existing shed was supposed to be removed.
Part of it's been removed. We have a permit to demolish it, the building apartment, so it's on its way out, but it's not to be removed yet.
And what's taken away? It was brought back and they said we could, they said we could have sheds. I wasn't aware that we had that description written out there, they said we could have a shed.
So, we learned that and said, oh, we got.
So, I had the board, my shed was crap, the tip of the way was going in, and we just kind of, we put it under the gap. So, we started discussing what we need, and then we learned that we weren't supposed to have a shed in seven point four, six point nine nine, and all this.
So, you removed the existing shed, the prior shed, put a new shed in.
We brought half of the old one back.
Without further ado.
Because that's actually the rule of change, that we could have a shed.
You still have to go, you still have to go through the process.
You should go ahead and go.
You gotta do a zoning permit, not a building permit. You have to go to the HDC.
So, that's what. Yeah, about that's what.
Have you done that?
Not yet. We want to start with you first, that is it.
Okay. Just explain to me how before, because I don't remember, you were going to be over ground cover, now you're under, even though you did the work? How does that work?
Some work you've done, like Friday.
Just identi, I know where you are, identify yourself for the.
There were certain parts of the building that were removed. There was a part portion of the house that turned into an open air porch. The walls were moved against, we removed from ground cover, we didn't use ground cover. And then there was also the survey kind of updated itself. There were some big lines that we need to connect, and that's all kind of added up to this lower number.
So, there's a.
Are we going to see all the work in seventy hours?
Yep.
So, there's a survey from June 8th, 2012, that shows a ground coverage of six point eight nine percent, and then this one shows six point nine nine.
What do you think out there is the prior to any construction, after the six point eight nine?
Okay, that's 2012.
Yes. And you see the driveway kind of back there, the two houses, and then the six point nine is half.
Actually, no, this shows the driveway on the same side.
Well, this one shows the ground cover existing at seven point four, which is what you.
This one, yeah.
I think applied with in May of 2012.
May 2000, and June of 2012, it's something different. Did the lot size change or anything? That's a big difference in ground coverage.
Yeah. I mean, it just seems a little, the whole thing seems odd.
Well, they removed this little bump. That's, that's not there.
That's a bump? That's more like a, those are steps.
It's ground coverage. No, 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 not the thing in front.
Oh, the inside bump?
The inside bump.
Yeah, it says to be removed.
And there was a ward proposed that got built. I think the biggest difference is that this covered deck is not ground coverage.
Yeah, this is not here. I mean, this is here and not here.
Right. And this, I think, is an enclosed porch.
All right. Well, I mean, the bottom line is, according to your surveyor, it would be nice when they, if the actual number was on there, like it's, instead of the six point nine nine, but.
Can we just kind of roughly sketch it where we move it over to the new one, and then see how this is in fact, just rough idea to give you. Right. So, you're compliant, so there's no reason that they shouldn't be able to get a shed?
No. I, I, I agree. It's just, I would like to be comfortable that the math is correct, but.
Well, you can only.
I suppose we have.
We have a stamp.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How does everyone else feel about this one?
No problem.
Okay with it? All right. Assuming that the existing ground cover really is six point nine nine percent, and so you got point oh one to play with, I would hate to have you come back and say, oh, there was a surveying error. So, you're, you're confident that that number is correct?
Well, he's looked at it, he double-checked it twice in the last two days, last few days.
Same surveyor?
Yeah.
And the porch cannot be.
It was just done last week, and now you can do that again this morning.
All right. And then the porch cannot be enclosed, you know that.
Can't be screened either.
It's not screened, correct?
No screen. I'd have a picture if you wanted to see it.
I'd love to. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, there will be another survey done when the zoning shed is put on the property as well, that would confirm the number after the fact.
Sure.
Well, I assume that all that, the surveyor would do would be place the shed on the Asbeldt, probably wouldn't recalculate the ground cover.
Yeah. But, I mean, at the end of the day, it would be in compliance.
Right. Just, just.
So, do you, yeah, because these, all of these surveys date back from 2013. Is there anything?
This one does too?
No, this, this one's, this one's July 6th.
Oh, the variance dated.
It's a variance, it's a variance, right.
Got it. I'm reading the wrong date.
I know, Mr. I was looking at it like that first.
Do you know how much that went from six point eight nine to six point nine nine?
Six point eight nine.
Yeah.
Is at.
It's your house, right?
Date of June 8th, 2012.
Right.
It's on page eighty-eight.
Right. No, no, I see that. How come it went?
I don't know. That's weird.
Well, it, it, it went up versus down, right? That, that's, it just doesn't give you a lot of, a lot of faith, but.
Is there anybody in the audience?
Is there anybody in the audience who wants to talk about this one?
No, I just wanted to know, does that, what's the size of?
Can, can you, I don't want to interrupt, but can you identify yourself for the.
Diary frame, and I live in Cisco, I'm going to be asking you later about it, but I just wanted to know, um, the height of that shed? Is that a one-story shed?
It's a one-story shed. We have, it's a one-story ranch with a one-story cottage. So, the plan is to make a one-story shed with the same roof line, house, and the cottage finished with the same roofing materials, same siding materials, so we'll just like it.
Excellent.
Yeah. Again, just for your edification, you have to get a building or zoning permit to do this. You have to get HDC approval to do this. So, arguably, the HDC would be the arbiter of whether or not you could have a ten by twenty by forty-foot tall shed.
What is this? Sixth Gardner Road shed.
Is that the?
That's the old shed?
That's the old shed. What remains now, there had been an animal or something trapped in here.
Oh, God.
We pulled out the house, so the back, there was like a, like a bear had gone to the back of the thing. So, the whole thing was taken away. Then we had this part chopped off, and we just brought this back.
Mm-hmm.
So, it is one of the ugliest things you've ever seen.
Yeah.
So, just looking to replace it with something that's better looking.
Okay. So, you got.
I don't see anything else in here that, so, what does this do to the, it doesn't, what does this do to the existing variance? I mean, you don't get the right to put the shed on and then exceed ground cover at this point.
Oh, right. But we had the variance under specific condition that no further, no sheds would be on the property unless approved by the board, so we had to come back.
But what I'm getting at is, you.
Would you abandon the variance relief?
Yeah, the variance is.
Arguably, the variance, yeah, wasn't.
Should be removed.
Yeah, the variance should disappear, in my opinion.
Because you don't need it.
You don't, you no longer need variance relief. In other words, you couldn't take that variance, go down in the building department and say, oh, now we want to add that extra three hundred, I don't know how many.
Yeah, that's a better, yeah, that's a better approach.
That's probably the better way to do it, is abandoning.
Yeah.
Abandon the variance.
Yeah. Yeah. Can you just put that in the decision?
As far as I'm concerned, but I'm not a lawyer.
It's not noticed that way as a rescission of variance. It's noted as a modification.
Well, yeah, but it doesn't make any sense that this variance would stay in existence, given it's no longer necessary.
Well, right, if we have to, we have to modify it to not allow the ground coverage increase then, as well.
But then they didn't need the variance.
I know that, but if she's saying we can't rescind it.
Well, we can. You just have to come back after it's due.
Would they have to come back, though, or if, couldn't we just?
Through staff.
Yeah, do, I guess because it would be a potent case. I mean, who's going to object to a variance being?
Rescinded.
Yeah, I, I don't have any problem with that.
It still has to be on.
Yeah, yeah, no, I hear you. I'm just saying, I don't know that they would have to come back for that.
But what if we don't, to, to, to shed, whatever you want for the rescission, just accomplish that separately at the next meeting? It should be.
Well, I would rather have it all done. I mean, you still have to go through the process of the HDC getting a zoning permit. I assume, I mean, maybe you've already said the shed is in place, so what is, what is any delay? How is that inconveniencing you?
It actually saves you time in a way, because if you're rescinding the variance, you don't have an appeal period, right? Or would you still have an appeal period?
No, you would have an appeal period, the modification.
There is an appeal period if you don't, what we're doing, rescinding is we're noticing them, we're filing them with the town clerk once they've been drafted, and then there's, they are sent out to the butters at that point. But technically, if they aren't really subject to an appeal period, in terms of.
Right. Because if they're rescinding something, I mean, for a modification, you would have to have a, an appeal period, but for.
You might actually be saving time.
That's what I'm saying. If you rescind it, you might save time. When are you signing your decisions, like at the next meeting? Is that? Sometimes in between, it just depends. So, you're saying right now the appeal period would start ticking, and it would probably, like, with the, the, as, you know, this pass?
Oh, yeah.
Is that what you're thinking? It might. And so, if it's easier just to refile, to rescind it, and then you don't have any appeal period.
And maybe the minutes would suffice for the building department to start at least, start pulling the building permit?
It's a good idea, Alan.
Should we waive the additional time?
Yes.
Yeah, I think so.
Yes.
No. I just wanted to say no. I don't care. It's fine with me.
Yeah. I mean, they should.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, yeah, I, yeah, it's too bad that it wasn't noticed that way, but, anyway.
So, we'll just, you need to request that we modify the application as a rescission of the warrant.
And that you can do whatever you want with your zoning shed, well, within two hundred square feet.
Right. Right, once the variance is gone.
You have no jurisdiction. Limitation is gone. Then that limitation is gone.
The limitation's gone, you can legally put your shed on there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, you would call this without prejudice. But we should do that, and then we'll come back for rescission of the warrant.
No way, proceed to your, this is actually, once it goes through this, I will have a shed.
Yeah, basically, because you're under the ground coverage, you didn't need that original variance, which gave you the restriction of not having the shed. So, once you rescind that decision, then you're good. You can have the shed. No problem. So, then we'll draw today? Okay.
Okay. So, will someone make a motion to withdraw this application without prejudice, please?
So.
Did I ask the audience, did anybody come specifically to talk about this one?
He did ask.
I did ask. Okay. So, Kieran makes the motion.
A second.
Susan seconds it. Any further discussion?
No.
No. We'll just go from this end of the table, Jeff. Or no, one, two, three, four, five. Five in the middle are voting. Okay? All is in favor, say aye.
Aye. It's the main board? Yeah. Thank you.
Sorry, I was confused, as usual.
So, we're going back to Sarah?
Is Sarah here now? Yeah.
Yeah, Sarah is here.
Okay. All right. So, sixteen seventeen Gerald Hamelberg and Barbara Hamelberg, trustees of Erkim Realty Trust.
I'm sorry, I'm messing up here.
Nine Davis Lane for the applicant.
Sarah Alchuk for the applicant, and with me is Mr. Hamelberg, their builder, Rob Wellin, and the architect, Steve Thoreau, as well as Arthur Reed. So, this is a situation where there's been recent work done on this property. It's a pre-existing, non-conforming lot on Davis Lane in Cisco. The property is undersized. It complies in all other respects with the bylaw, except unfortunately, this ground cover issue that came up as a result of the recent additions. And I want to explain how this ground cover issue arose. There was an existing structure, it had an attached garage, the garage was being removed, and the ground cover for the garage was replaced by additions made in another location on the structure. What wasn't apparent or taken into account in the calculation is a small overhang of the second floor space that was built into the garage, so that when the garage was removed, that second floor space remained an overhangs, creating this thirty-one square foot mistake. We had another surveyor do an Asbeldt, and that survey came up with a twenty-eight square foot overage. So, we did go back and have it checked. We're going with the, with the larger one, obviously. I have pictures and the prior HDC approval, just that I want to show you, because I think it will show how this wasn't, wasn't seen.
Has this become your specialty?
Not intentionally, no. This is the second one I have. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Is, is the shed?
The shed is there.
A zoning shed?
Yeah.
No. No way. With a two, with a two-story zoning shed? With a building permit?
Yeah, that's.
That's not, that's not, in my opinion, a zoning shed.
Well, that's how they're treating it.
It was issued a building permit with two bedrooms, with two stories.
This is a.
Has a stair? I mean, I don't agree with that.
Yeah, well, they did, and, and.
And they issued a building permit for it, not a zoning permit. So, why isn't it showing up as ground coverage?
It's a shed, totally.
It's a shed.
It's not a, yeah.
It's a building permit, it's not a zoning permit.
Here's a drawing of it. I disagree with that interpretation of it being a zoning shed. I don't know that we can say that's ridiculous.
Well, we can if it was, if it was applied for as a, anything other than as a, and the fact that it has a building permit.
Right.
Appears that it was.
It's not a zoning shed.
Applied for as, as if it were not a zoning shed.
So, we're actually looking at two hundred and thirty-one square feet of overage.
If you're taking the position of not having a zoning shed, then we're looking at two hundred and thirty-one square feet.
Well, we're taking that position because we're given a building permit.
Right.
Usually, a zoning permit says zoning permit.
It was certainly the intention to have a zoning shed.
Is there plumbing in it?
Is there plumbing in it? No.
But how can, how much, how many, how much square footage is it?
Well, it's only on the ground, but I think the intent of the bylaw is obviously to have a one-story storage shed.
Do we have a definition of a zoning shed in the bylaw?
There is a definition of shed in the bylaw.
Well, my understanding is it doesn't need a building permit, and so it's not.
But I don't, I don't think the kind of permit that it was issued is dispositive as to whether or not it's a shed.
That's not true.
That's not true.
I mean, you specifically have to get a zoning shed for these two hundred square foot sheds.
You could also get a building permit.
No.
No.
Is the definition?
Because then it becomes ground coverage.
Could you read the definition of shed?
Then it becomes ground coverage if you have a building permit.
It doesn't say that in the bylaw, I'm just saying, to my interpretation.
That's the position that this board will take.
Okay. Shed, an accessory structure for storage purposes, not designed to be served by heat or plumbing, and not to be used for habitation.
Does it say anything about the maximum height?
No, where that is addressed is on the ground cover.
I heard about this shed.
Yeah, I don't buy this, this issue either.
I don't see, what page is that on? Is that in here?
Yeah. This is going to have to be a lot more.
Not more than one accessory detached, that covering area now.
Take a look. Did you hear that? Did she hear that?
Wish Marcus was here.
Yeah.
Well, if they can simply amend the building permit, enter a zoning permit, and then they're.
Then they're okay.
Yeah.
Then they've got what we need.
Yeah.
Be able to further discuss this.
Yeah. Do you have a sign-off on the shed?
Not yet.
Do you have a CBO on the shed?
Not yet.
Okay. Then I would do that. I think, I think Mark's right. I think you should amend that building permit to become a zoning permit. Okay.
This is a garage, right?
It's a shed.
It's a shed.
It looks like a lot more in the shed domain.
Well, it was built by Structures Unlimited, I think, as a shed.
There's special drawings on this drawing.
What page are you on, Sarah?
I don't know. This is, was in the extra packet that Almore sent today. Anyway, should we move on from that?
Well, it's obviously an issue.
If you want to condition relief upon our converting that building permit to a zoning permit, I'm happy to do that.
What's in the shed?
It's at my house.
Oh.
Well, what's in the shed?
It's, it's storage. It's huge for storage.
I'm here to speak about this.
You don't want to hear.
No, not yet.
I'm sorry, I thought you spoke about two, you said two stories, so I thought you were.
Okay.
No, no, forget it. So what's, there's no cars being stored in this shed?
Ask who?
I am, I'm asking him.
I'm sorry, you?
No, no, no.
No, it's just, you know, beach stuff, shed stuff. I mean, it meets the definition of shed in the bylaw and it meets the definition necessary for ground cover under the bylaw, but I'm happy to convert the permit.
Can you stand up on the second floor?
I think you have to do that before you come back. We're not gonna do it conditionally.
I think you need to show them.
The ridge height is seven feet 11 maybe? I can't really see.
The ridge height?
What's on the second floor?
What's on the second floor in the shed?
It's like a half floor.
There's a floor.
What kind of storage?
I've only got a half a story.
I don't care if people keep their college here.
Stand up someplace, someplace to pick me up.
It has eaves.
Yeah, it's under the eaves.
It's got a dormer, doesn't it?
Yeah, it's got two dormers, one in the front.
No, I'm sorry. That's, if it somehow meets the definition, it's stretching it to the, the rubber band is, should snap here any day now.
My understanding of a zoning shed is that you do not, is simple enough that you don't need structural drawings, therefore you don't need a building permit. This is not simple enough to fall into that category.
But that's not what the, I'm just, I don't want to argue with you, Lisa, but it's not what the bylaw says. The bylaw says
Well, the bylaw, well, okay, but my opinion, and that's how I interpret it, whether or not Marcus interprets it differently, if this goes ahead as a zoning shed, that's just, you know, just wait until what else comes across as a zoning shed.
Marcus even sees that.
A zoning shed, yeah.
Absolutely.
He sees a zoning shed.
Well, arguably, he would have seen this, but
But it has a building permit.
It has a building permit.
Yeah, it's a building permit, but then as a building permit, unless there was some other hinky math, it didn't, the ground cover wouldn't have worked.
Right. It was shown as a zoning shed because it was shown as 231.
Oh, he showed.
Can we all look at the description on the building permit application itself?
What page is that? Seventy-two.
What does it say, Mark?
Page seventy-two.
Thank you, I was gonna ask.
This is interesting because the description allowed the addition to the dwelling plus the garage. Today, we have separate applications that are required for each structure. So the garage today, or shed, or whatever it was, would have been an independent application today. So if you read the description, it says addition, one family, one bedroom, bath on first floor, and one car garage slash one bedroom and one bath on second floor.
Yeah, but that's for the main house.
That's for the house.
I understand that. What I'm just saying is, we don't do it this way today, so there may be some confusion here, and that is probably why the permit was issued as a building permit because of the application was for the house and the building.
No, I think there's a later building permit.
No, this was in 2016.
Oh, okay.
This is 2016.
Okay.
So, yeah, I was looking for the building permit application for that shed slash whatever.
Yeah, I don't, not seeing it.
I don't think I gave you the, the actual applications.
I got, I have the HDC application, that's it.
Where did you get that?
She gave it to me. She being Sarah, sorry.
Okay, because I don't see this.
I guess this is the overhanging portion of the second floor.
This dotted line?
That's what I, I don't understand that, because that's first floor, yeah. So, the second floor, which they don't give me, oh, here it is, the second floor, yeah, is that little portion that's over. But I don't, yeah. I think to make this all clear
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I can
I have to say, I haven't been focusing on the shed because this whole time I have been under the impression that this was a zoning shed. I really have just focused on the 31 square feet of ground cover on the main.
Yeah, and I had as well until I got in the packet today, we got a picture of the shed. Then I was like, well, wait a minute, that doesn't look like a zoning shed to me, so.
I get the feeling that Sarah wasn't the one that was responsible for sending a picture of the shed.
I didn't send any pictures.
Yeah, no, it just came in a packet.
So you're, you're not here for the shed, you're here for the house.
I'm here for the house, correct.
Right, but now the shed has made the house a bigger problem, so I would, I think, I think what would, what would make me happy with this was just to have some clarification from the building department of how they
If that was existing as proposed, oh, but that, go ahead, I'm sorry.
How they met, I would, what would make me happy to, or to be able to move forward with the 31 square feet would be to first have clarification from Marcus and the building department that either they issued a building permit in error and it should have been a zoning shed, or no, we issued a building permit because although it's 199 square feet on the ground, it exceeds the parameters of a zoning shed and then we have a different issue.
But they wouldn't, see, if it wasn't a zoning shed, they wouldn't have issued that shed permit because
They didn't issue a shed permit.
Well, they wouldn't have issued the building permit for the shed.
Right, if it was a zoning shed, they would have issued a zoning
No, no, but what I'm saying is, they wouldn't have issued, if they didn't think it was a zoning shed, they wouldn't have issued a building permit for the shed because the entire property then would have been over ground cover. And that would have been extremely obvious because the house was applied for just under the 1,500 square feet.
Right.
So they would have
Well, why don't you
We never would have made it through Marcus's review.
Well, what we'd like to see, I think, is the evidence to all that, the building permit application, why there was this, this, what seems to be an error, and then you can explain the 31 square feet if you'd like, although I don't quite see that either, but because
I don't understand where the 31 square feet is.
I can, I can have Steve explain that, if you want.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it's not evident.
I can't tell.
I think some color-coded things might have been helpful, some big plans, but go ahead, Steve.
Okay. Well, do you want us to do it all at the next meeting, or do you want to hear what he has to say?
I think what happened, I think I got it now, you added this addition to the left.
Correct. And when we took off the garage, it exposed
This thing.
This small overhang of second-story space.
That's what happened.
The assumption was made that when the garage came off, all of the garage ground cover was available.
This overhang still remained. So that's the 31 square feet right there.
When that house was built, was that even, was it zoning by law?
The overhangs?
Well, yeah, it was, and see, Michael, the
I have no idea.
Well, that was that
I assume it was relatively recently.
Early.
Well, the changes were the application that Mark
Ninety-nine.
referred to, ninety-nine?
But it was counted, it was counted as ground cover because it was inside the garage and the garage was ground cover.
Right.
So it was always, it was always counted as part of the, as part of the ground cover, but what happened was, when the garage came off, the assumption was made that all of the garage ground cover was available for the addition, not understanding that this area that had been built into the garage, housing second-story space, would continue to overhang and would continue to be counted as ground cover.
Got it.
So it's that little overhang that had previously been buried into the garage. Its exposure resulted in the ground cover overage of about 31 square feet. Does that make sense?
Yeah, now that makes sense. Makes perfect sense.
I mean, the 31, before, yeah, yeah, okay, can I
So, so for the next meeting, you would like something from Marcus indicating that this 200-square-foot structure is considered a zoning shed?
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, so now you can get the two-story building though.
Yeah.
I think we want to see the application, the building permit application, or the zoning shed application.
Okay, all right, we'll provide
I mean, I assume it got HDC approval and everything, and I just find it hard to believe if you applied to the HDC as a shed
You mean to the building department?
Well, no, even the HDC, that this is a shed, that does not look like a shed to me, it looks like a small house. A tiny house, maybe.
It's a shed, I mean, it meets the shed definition.
Somebody drove me past her, like, can you believe that? That's a zoning shed?
Is there any CPO in your staff?
Yeah, it is, I'm trying to find it.
Obviously, they got that if they got a building permit, but I'm just saying, maybe it wasn't represented as a shed.
No, it was represented as a shed.
What does it stand as?
Yeah, I found it, sorry. It says shed.
Okay.
Seventeen feet, three inches tall.
Anyway, it's just one more.
It's, it's a shed.
Well.
And this is not the first shed of this kind that I'm aware of.
It's the first one I've ever seen.
And this is the first one I've ever seen, that's two stories, that's a zoning shed. I've seen people go below them into the foundation, but never to a second floor.
It's a pretty, it's, it's not really a full second floor, I mean, it's 17 feet high at the peak.
You can stand up there.
In certain places in it.
Yeah, but most
In a lot of places, it's got dormers and whatnot. I'm saying if it was unusable, stoop space, why would you have built it?
I think what you're, what you're saying is that you would like to see a change in the definition of shed in the bylaw.
Well, definitely a change to the definition of zoning shed, which is in and of itself crazy, but
There is no definition of zoning shed.
Just identify, will you please identify yourself for the tape?
Gerald Hamiltonburg, there are four such sheds within five houses of this property in that area. Similar, some have a shed dormer, some have a bigger dormer, smaller dormer, they're all, my understanding is when I sought one, I said I want the same thing as these other neighbors had, and that's what I had built.
We don't know, your neighbors may or may not have exceeded their ground cover ratio. If they didn't, then it's a moot point for them.
But they're, I do know that they're all pretty much maxed out, and in fact, one of them even got a variance at the end of the street and built still a third property, that's the third building on his property. So it's, this is, was a shed, always was a shed, and then they took down a shed and built another shed in compliance with what I understood to be the law and what, in accordance with other sheds in the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
What was this?
So.
Uh, where were we?
I'll go back, get something from Marcus, and/or amend the application. If Marcus says it qualifies as a zoning shed under its existing application, I'm not going to change the application, I'm just going to leave it. I'm going to give you the applications themselves. Is there anything else that you want to see?
I think they should close out the permit.
Yeah.
As a zoning shed.
Well, we can't get a CO because we can't get a CO for the property because we're over ground cover.
You can close out the zoning permit.
We could get the sign off.
You don't get a CO.
Yeah, you don't get a sign off, but you can get that signed off as a zoning permit. But I wanted to see the card, I want them to do the inspection and sign off on it.
Okay.
And when you ask
To the extent that they can with the ground cover overage.
But if it's a zoning shed, it shouldn't matter.
It doesn't matter, the ground cover, it wouldn't matter, it wouldn't affect the ground cover.
But if we have a property that's already over ground cover, they may take the position that they can't sign off on anything.
Well, they may take the position, yes, that you wouldn't have been allowed to put the shed on, or the shed
Because they're over.
Yeah, so
That's what I'm worried, that's what I think, that's what I think may happen.
Well
But I'll get as much of it signed off as I can.
Okay, the only other comment I have, Sarah, is when you say something like, what else do you want us, want me to bring, as if you, we don't tell you now and you don't show up with something next week, month?
No, no, I'm just
No, wait, let me finish.
Okay.
Then it comes out, well, you didn't tell me to bring that. We're not telling you what to bring, we're suggesting you bring evidence to back up your case, period.
Right, I've never suggested that you didn't tell me to bring something, I'm trying
Well, it's happened before, not necessarily from you, but
Not from me.
Well, that may be the case, but
Not from me, I'm just trying to get a list of what you have identified today that you want. I understand that when I come back, you may have a completely new and different list of things, and I will attempt to anticipate everything that you might request.
Thank you.
But I don't always succeed, as you
No, it
I almost always don't succeed.
That's not true, but
It is true.
We have had on occasion, when applicants have thrown it back in our face, well, you didn't tell me to bring that.
Well, I'm not
Well, I'm sorry, we're not here to tell the applicants what to bring.
I'm not doing that, I'm just trying to identify from the concerns that you have raised today, what things would be helpful in addressing those, to the extent that you want to tell me, and if you don't want to tell me, I will just attempt to figure it out on my own.
I just want to be able to connect the dots that
Yeah.
To get to the point where I can say, okay, this is a zoning shed, and then we're dealing with 31, so I just want conclusive
In addition to that, Sarah, if you, if you could, and maybe this is a moot point by virtue of some of the notations that are in the file, when the, there was a zoning enforcement letter that was describing the reconstruction of a porch and the fact that the porch would no longer be an encroachment in the front yard setback, there was a notation on that that in fact, that the only reconstruction of the porch was to re-clad the columns for that porch so that in fact, that zoning encroachment would remain on the site. This is, this is the way I read the language in the staff report and red report there. So, I guess if Marcus is okay with that, I just don't want that to be another hindrance when you finally do get the relief that you need for the 31 square feet overage, that he says all of a sudden, I'm still not satisfied, you resolve the fact that you're not in compliance with the
You gave them to me.
Okay. Got it.
I did see that, now I can't find it because I'm fully confused on what it says.
Okay, I, I, I mean, Mark, Mark was touching on, I guess I don't understand this either, proposed. This, the proposed does not match that, right? That's the first floor.
Do you know where we are now? These are all mixed up now.
It's got the
That all matches.
No, but the porch, the porch, which is in the setback.
Right, this is the, this is the
No, that matches.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong side.
You're looking at it upside down?
I have it very soon.
Where's my Snickers?
How about some glasses?
I want to look at Hamiltonburg.
I got new contacts. Okay, anyway, Arthur, did you want to speak about this?
He just wants to mention to me about the front yard setback.
Yeah, the front yard setback issue came up, and the building has been there for more than 10 years. Now, it used to be that 10 years from construction of a structure, that it was protected against enforcement. Yes, with a valid building permit. That statute has been amended now, so that after 10 years, after a structure's been in existence for 10 years or more, it has the status of a pre-existing non-conforming structure without the, as to regard, with regard to that non-conformity.
Is that true without a building permit?
Whether or without a building permit, after 10 years, this, this was passed by the state legislature last year.
Yeah, I, yeah, go ahead.
Part of chapter 48, section 7. So, so that's, that's, that's protected.
Okay. Okay, are we, are we, are we ready to move on?
I think you have public here, you might want to go.
Oh, excellent.
I'm Mike.
You're it.
I'm Cisco, and you went into a lot of questions, taking your part, about what a shed is, if I have no cars, no electric, no electricity.
You can have flights.
Have electricity.
No plumbing.
No plumbing.
But my concern is, is that the height of this one shed is far different than what's ever in our neighborhood now, and I know the jury was referring to another house, that it does have a basement, a shed, and it does have a very mini, mini dormer, it's a slanted one, and the windows in it are no wider than one of those things
Like a transom, yeah.
Very, very tiny, so I don't call that a one-and-a-half-story building at all. I, I would like, I know you're the end result, you are not the beginning of who passed this duty, who considers a shed a shed, so I'm hearing from you that maybe there isn't a really clear definition about what is a shed. The gentleman before had a one-single-story shed, and that's been my interpretation of a shed all along, it's a place where you're
Bikes.
Share your lawn mower.
Mm-hmm.
But they're getting very pretty, and they're getting very elaborate, and so from this point on, a couple of years or three years ago, we were asked out here to change the zoning out there, and the neighbors said, absolutely not, we want it
Yeah, I remember that.
We don't want any additional, but now with this height of this building, I'm anticipating, well, what's coming down the road with everybody else is an precedent, and that's my only concern. What's done is done here for me, as far as that's between you and the Hamiltonburgs, I will be to the future to make sure that I don't begin to see very tall sheds, I mean, you might have 200 feet on the bottom, but you've given yourself 200 feet on the top of the building as well. So, I need a direction, and where do I go from here? Do I start at the, the planning board, not the planning board, the HDC? Is this where I begin?
No, because it's not an HDC
No.
Well, they have to pass it down.
Yeah, but they're passing it as an architectural structure, not as to whether or not it's a zoning shed.
So, but why doesn't the red flag, the one that you hear, it's a shed?
Well, because it can be, it can be a shed that counts towards ground coverage, you can build a shed that is included in ground coverage.
So maybe it's the terminology of what we are now thinking of a shed.
Well, there's no question that there should be a clearer definition of what a zoning shed is.
So where do I go from here?
Probably planning and land use.
Planning and land use.
Planning and land use, next door. I mean, there should be a clearer definition. My guess is that the intent of the bylaw passing years ago, there was to give you two, first 120 square feet, I think it was, then it was bumped up to 200, was 200 square feet on the ground, one floor. I suspect that was the intent, unfortunately.
What's wrong with that? That's, everybody
I think that's, that's what, my understanding is, is what is allowed. I never, ever, I always tell people, you can't have a second floor, it's a zoning shed because then you need a building permit.
And when, it's just, when I saw the word shed, I said, why do you, it's a little different than what I think of a shed, so that's what you're saying.
Yeah.
I think we agree with you, but unfortunately, maybe the definition is, as many things in our bylaw, vague, so
What do you think about a basement shed? I've seen a lot of those.
I know, I see those too, and I don't necessarily, again, I don't agree with it, I don't, you I know, I see those too and I don't necessarily, again, I don't agree with it, I don't, you know, I try to stay away from building, when I fill out a building permit application for a shed, I don't show a foundation. If the contractor puts a foundation in, then that's up to him, but I'm not showing one on my plans because to me, that puts you into needing.
As part of the zoning bylaw, you think that that's an important part of it?
Well, I think the whole.
I don't, I think if you're going underground, arguably, it's not visible, I mean, you can't.
But I think it's the definition of needing a building permit. Once you get into needing an inspection, you need a building permit.
That's a good point.
And that's how I interpret it.
Well, you need an inspection to, for, for a zoning shed, for the, whatever holds it to the ground.
No, you don't.
No? No.
No, you literally can just plop it on the ground.
It's a little frightening quickly because, you know, a hurricane could.
Yeah, it's gonna be like Auntie Em up there floating around.
Yeah, but they don't require anything.
So, so is the answer to the question that lady just asked, that we need a town meeting vote on definition of a zoning shed?
I think there's no question that this should come up at the next town meeting to clearly define what a zoning shed is. So there's not a.
In the interim, how, how do you feel about this application? Which we're not really here to hear the application for the zoning shed, but I know it's collateral that, that the board pulled in and I understand why, but is, is there, is this application in before the, the definition is cleared up by the town meeting?
Well, I think that, I think the answer to that depends on what the building department comes back with. Because I think for us, you know, if it's a zoning shed, it has a zoning permit and if it has a building permit, it's something different. So if they permitted it incorrectly, then that needs to be addressed to validate it as a zoning shed, otherwise it looks like it's a ground cover structure, which creates a problem for this application. So I, if the, I just wanted the building department to come back and clarify what they actually meant to do.
It may be just a color or on the building department's part as well, that they pulled the wrong form out and typed it all up and Marcus could go in to see Karen Hall and say, Karen, turn this into a zoning permit.
Well, the other issue that could have happened, and I'm not saying it did in this case, although we have seen it in the past, where we get some of the information and the plans that went with this application actually looked like a one-story shed.
Interestingly, the.
And maybe it was or wasn't built that way. I don't know, I'm not accusing you of that, I'm simply saying we have seen it in the past.
So Lisa just was saying, we were looking at the picture of it, which Lisa was saying that the, interestingly enough, the, the, the permit to demolish the detached shed was a zoning permit, but they didn't issue a zoning permit for what was replaced, they issued a building permit.
Correct, but, but, I mean, I just want to make two, two points.
Sure.
This shed permitted it as a shed with a building permit, first of all, there's, it meets the definition in the bylaw and there's nothing that says it can't be two stories. There's nothing that says it has to have a zoning permit as opposed to a building permit. So as far as I'm concerned, at the moment, with the state of our current bylaw, this is a shed. If, and I know you're not going to, but if you were going to grant relief for the 31 square feet of the house and say we could have a total of 1531 and we go in to get RCO and Marcus feels that this shed doesn't qualify as a zoning shed, he's gonna bounce us because we're gonna be at 1731 instead of 1531.
I'd rather see the permit amended.
I know you, I know you want to see it amended.
Yeah.
But there's nothing in the bylaw that requires that, is what I'm saying. The bylaw doesn't say that a shed has to have a zoning permit if it's a zoning shed.
I, I agree. I disagree with that.
It doesn't say, it doesn't say that.
No, but when you apply for a building, a zoning shed, you apply as a zoning shed and you're issued a zoning permit.
Right, and this is.
That's the intent of a zoning permit.
But there's nothing in the bylaw that requires that.
Well, but that's.
But, but, so even if there's nothing in the bylaw, Sarah, the, the practice is, if it's a zoning shed, you have to get a zoning permit and this is not a zoning permit, it's a building permit and there are structural drawings and that seems to delineate it from what, what the zoning permit that was issued to demolish the zoning shed. We're just asking for clarification, that's all.
And I'm perfectly happy to get it for you.
Because if it turns out that it is, I don't, I, I'm not comfortable setting a precedent that someone with a, that, that, based on someone having a building permit for 199 square feet, that we granted extra relief and Marcus doesn't catch it, like, they made him, if they made a mistake once, like, he may not even look at it because he'll, I don't know, I just, I want to see from the building department, the building department, that, that this is what they meant to do.
Members of the board, Steve Thoreau.
Go ahead.
Okay, like Sarah said, going back a little ways ago, okay, we applied through the building department and all proper channels for the shed. The shed permit was issued a long time after the house was issued the addition permit, okay? The square footage of the addition and the paperwork that was involved had to go through Marcus's office and Marcus released the permit based on the fact that it was not ground cover as a shed. He would not have released the permit if he hadn't agreed that it was not ground cover in his shed because we would have been at the 1700 square foot mark, clearly over our ground cover and the permit would never have come out of the building department. I mean, Marcus has done a good job, he sees and reviews these permits, we've been denied permits and other reasons because of things were unclear, whether it's a zoning permit or a building permit. In my mind, I, I don't know the, the extent of the law here, but it was issued under that fact that we could build the 200 square foot free from ground cover and it complied with the zoning regulations set forth by the town and the zoning official when he issued the permit, probably almost seven, six months after we started construction. Thank you.
Steve, I have one question for you. Are you going through the inspektional process for footings and everything else like that for this building permit?
Mark, I don't have any supervision on this project.
Well, I want to know that because you're required to do so. You're required to meet the hurricane code and have all the inspections under the building permit status, not a zoning permit.
Well, you know, all, again, all permits are handled properly and closed out properly, so everything conforms to the code in Massachusetts.
I just want to make sure that the inspections are happening as part of this building permit.
Yeah, why, why wouldn't they not happen?
Because the builder may think it's a zoning permit.
No, he's, we're quite.
I just, I want to clarify.
All right, anyway, we need to move on off this one. We've, I think we've been pretty clear on what we'd like to have happen. You don't necessarily agree, but that's okay.
You got the, yeah, I just want to, the, the application for the zoning permit, the one that was submitted, I'd like to see a copy of that.
Yeah, me too.
Someone will see how the ground coverage was noted.
Well, yeah, and I'd like to see the plans that were attached to, to the building.
Any, any documentation that went to the building department for that, I think is important.
One more time.
I'd like to see the back of the card, like, what's been signed off so far on this building permit.
Go ahead.
You know, I'm just sort of at the future, so I'm hearing from perhaps you that that might be a discussion in the future between the powers to be and you.
It would come to town meeting.
My definition will be a shed.
It would come, yeah.
Yeah, you certainly, as a citizen, you can go and meet with the plus department and you can, you can spearhead that effort if you, you know.
Yeah, it's a citizen, a citizen's article. Yeah, amen. A citizen's article at the town, town meeting would do the trick.
Okay.
Yeah, Eleanor can help you through that, thank you. All right, so.
Motion to continue till August 10th?
Yeah. Okay, there was no one else in the audience waiting to speak about this, right? No. Okay, so the motion's been made in second to continue to August 10th. Lisa made it, Michael seconded it. Any further discussion? No, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Pull it forward.
Sure. Okay, moving on.
No, go ahead.
All right, I was not going to sit on Eight Coffin Road. So Lisa, you want to take over?
Sure. Let's get to where I am. This is, this is 18 des 17, Stephen E. Philip and Carrie A. Philip, Eight Coffin Road. Arthur, for the applicant.
Thank you, and I have here with me Carrie and Stephen Philip, my clients. Some of you may know Carrie is paralegal in my office and her husband, Stephen, is a builder on the island. And they own the property in question, which is bisected, it is a lot shown on a land court plan that is bisected by Coffin Road, which is a road that was shown on plans going back to the original land court case of Tom Nevers back around the turn of the century. And Coffin Road ran through the whole southeast quarter of the island, basically between an area near the water and Tom Nevers Road, as shown on the early plans. The area in question was next to the original location of what was to be the, the airport to serve Nantucket, which belonged to the Curtis Wright Corporation, which I actually had occasion to represent at one point. And that property was ultimately sold by Curtis Wright to the developers of the appropriately named Wright's Landing. And the access to the Wright's Landing subdivision was Coffin Road, which at that time did not physically exist as a road on the ground when that subdivision was done, was started, when the property was sold to Curtis Wright, by Curtis Wright to the developers back in the 1980s. The developers then went ahead in the, in the 1990s with the application to subdivide the former Curtis Wright property as a so-called major residential subdivision, which is a type of cluster, in which the lots are relatively small and there's a certain amount of open space around them. And in the course of that, the planning board required that they construct Coffin Road between Tom Nevers Road, as it extends around the corner to the south, and the subdivision, not the part of Coffin Road which extends up to Tom Nevers Road to the north, but the part from the south coming up to the Wright's Landing subdivision. The effect of that was that two lots, and two lots only, were affected by the road that was constructed in the late 1990s by the Wright's Landing subdivision for access. Now, under, and one of those, of course, has been before you recently, more than once, most recently at your last meeting, this is the other lot and there aren't any others in the same situation. The result of the improvement of the road under the definition of lot in the Nantucket zoning bylaw and the definition of street is that it subdivided the lot. It caused the lot to be separated from another part of the same lot by a street. Street being defined in the bylaw, if I can find it here, I had it out just a minute ago. First of all, lot is defined as attractive land in common ownership, not divided by a street. So if it's divided by a street, the part that's separated by the street is no longer part of the same lot. And one of the definitions of street is a way shown on a plan approved and endorsed by the Nantucket Planning Board in accordance with the Massachusetts Subdivision Control Law and which has been improved and constructed in accordance with the requirements of such approval. And that is exactly what happened here. Coffin Road, previously a sort of paper road, was constructed pursuant to approval by the planning board in order to provide access for an approved subdivision. So the result is that the portion of the property that we're talking about here containing approximately 37,000 square feet was divided off, 35,447 square feet, was divided off from the remainder of the lot by the action of the planning board, whether intentionally or inadvertently, and I suspect inadvertently, in approving that plan. Now, what we are seeking here is the ability recognizing that that lot was created by town action and in accordance, so, oh, it's not directly a taking by the town, it's analogous to a taking by the town because this was done as a result of a town action, the approval of the subdivision and the construction of the road as required by the town in connection with that, that created this lot. And as such, we believe that it is appropriate that, in order to clarify its status and to enable it to be built upon as a separate lot, which it is, that we're asking for variance relief from this board in order to clarify that situation. As I said, the lot is some 35,000 square feet, it's in lug three zoning, there's ample room on the lot to put a house and a septic system and maintain all the required setbacks in lug three zoning, and that's the substance of what we're asking for. I would comment that the lot is considerably larger than the building lots in the Wright's Landing subdivision. As you will note, there have been various comments about the beauties of lug three zoning from the residents of Wright's Landing. Their lots are actually smaller as a result of being in a major residential development. My clients and I would be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
I just have a question for you, Arthur. Since the planning board created this, I'll call it a non-conformity for lack of a better rationale, why wouldn't it make sense to go in for an A and R subdivision and work it that way?
We're doing that, but the question is, what's the status of the lot thus created? I mean, we have a plan ready to go before the planning board, A and R.
Oh, you do?
We also, we also had considered treating this as a, as a secondary residential lot and going before the planning board. With that, in either case, we'll have an A and R plan.
That was my next question.
Is that the same root that the previous owners were, are they, are they creating an A and R subdivision?
I don't know, I don't, I'm not involved with them.
They will have to, they'll have to go to land court at another time.
You're talking about the people who were before us last month?
Marketing.
Yeah.
Is there a plan, Arthur, that shows how the lots would be divided? Or is it, or am I missing something?
I thought you had it.
It's, it's in the package.
What number is it? Oh, okay, great, 123. Okay, thanks. 123.
Yeah, the lot line would be, let's see.
Give you, and I know you've got some materials in, this is a, this is a, this particular, this is the Philip lot. Coffin Road comes through here.
Right.
Actually, this doesn't show the lot line that's running through it, which it needs to.
I thought I was for sure.
Which one?
Is this the plan you're looking for in my, in my file? Do you have a page number on that?
123.
No, that's Gardner Road.
I want to see Gardner. No, that's, it's 123.
I'm looking at 123 as well.
123, yeah.
Yeah.
That's, yeah.
Yeah.
This actually shows, is this what you have site plan and land or company is owning for the build's application? Say that, my eyes are not telling.
Is that the one October 2nd, 2014?
No.
June 12th, I have that. Yep, so where are the lots? What were the lots? 111.
Yeah, so the lot line runs from the southerly line of the lot.
Yep.
Up through the middle of Coffin Road.
Yep.
So that then runs along the frontage of the boundary between this lot and the Wright's Landing property.
So this, so this is the lot here, lot B, that they're trying to separate off?
Lot B is the, is indeed the lot that would be separated off.
And then all of lot A remains as one lot.
Right, the portion of Coffin Road to the north of Wright's Landing, that's never been constructed.
Exactly, that's right.
And therefore doesn't constitute a street.
Right, right.
And so we're. Oh, so you're trying to create lot B.
Lot B, yeah.
Lot B. I thought you were gonna carve these things in half.
No, no.
Because that's what the previous applicant did, carved it like on, basically on the middle of Coffin Road. Which was.
Because it was all improved, I imagine.
Yeah, it was improved all the way through.
Right, here it's not, here it's not.
Here it's not. There would be no justification for saying that the part to the north of Wright's Landing to the west of Coffin Road would be a separate lot from the rest of the property because once again, that hasn't become a street. There's only reason it ever would become a street because it wouldn't provide access to anything.
Arthur, would you know off the top of your head, maybe even Steve or Carrie know, how much ground cover could they put on that lot? I mean, it's an odd-shaped lot, that's why I'm asking the question. I know that on the Wright's Landing subdivision, that, that the architectural restrictions was that there would be one single family dwelling, there would be no secondary dwellings, there would be no outbuilding, although I think that got amended at some point during the course of things, they allowed them to build outbuilding. But due to the shape of the lot and the fact. But due to the shape of the lot and the fact that you're saying that you're going to be in conformity with the zoning setbacks for value G three, which are quite substantial, it looks like it's going to be a relatively small footprint.
Relatively small. Well, let's get into that, that's a very good point. This is not a pre-existing lot of record.
Right.
And as such, the language in there, about fifteen hundred square feet of footprint, does not apply.
Does not apply.
So we're dealing with three percent of the actual lot area.
Right.
Which puts us a little over a thousand square feet of ground cover.
Yeah.
We certainly would be perfectly happy to agree that, again, we get whatever ground cover is permitted based upon the zoning district.
Sure.
That there would be, that the property would be limited to a single, single-family dwelling, and I think they'd want to use up all of the ground cover on that. I suppose they could have part of the expression, the zoning shed.
Well, that's why I'm asking the question, I mean, what would be the necessary build-out on such a small.
Right.
Property in terms of what the client's desires are and what conditions we may wish to put on.
Right.
On this sliver of land that's being created as a individual buildable lot. Thousand square feet with an upstairs, and it's still going to give eighteen hundred square feet potential floor area there.
Plus you add all the porches, and it changes the massing.
We have a plan here, which Jeff Blockwell prepared.
And then you have septic.
Right, the septic.
Septic on the lot.
Jeff has, and again, I only have one copy of this, which you can keep, except we can pass it around, and it shows the various wells and septics in the area, and what the, what that does. And Jeff has shown a reasonable area here for a septic system, which he's shown the building envelope area over here, all of which would be setbacks. And again, the actual footprint would be dependent upon, you know, operating within the available ground cover.
Interesting, because that looks like a very small building envelope.
Well, yeah, I mean, it could be expanded out this way, but I mean, it's big enough to provide what we would be having.
Yeah. And how big is the septic system that can go on that lot? Because we're undersized again, and it's. Is there a well or town water?
Oh, it would be well.
So you got one bedroom per ten thousand square feet of lot area.
You would be looking at three.
At a three-bedroom.
Three thousand or possibly.
Maybe four.
Maybe four with an I A system.
Yeah. Okay.
But I think there's plenty of room there to provide that system.
Yeah, it's just, you know, is there going to be a swimming pool on this property? Is there going to be a zoning shed? Obviously, there'll be no garage unless it's part of the ground cover of the main dwelling. What are the, what are the, what's the desired build-out? Is it known at this time? It may not be known at this time. What are we going to condition that?
What does the dotted line denote, Arthur?
I'm sorry.
There's a little dotted line here. Does that show any, that this portion of the lot is not to be, this little dotted line?
Is there an easement to that lot?
No, there are no easements.
Because the building doesn't go back in there, and I'm just curious if there's any restrictions.
Yeah, you know.
I don't think it, I think you're just giving the, I'm just giving the, the roster.
I mean, so, yeah. I don't, I don't know what that signifies. I mean, I suppose there's no question why the, no reason why the building couldn't be pushed down.
You know what that might signify? There was a.
The septic lines are getting closer together.
Of course, but that mean you can start breaking down the massing on the back of the building.
There was a plan in here somewhere that showed like a MESA thing. Maybe that's what the line is.
Oh, that could be.
What's that?
There was a MESA, a plan that showed MESA hatching, like where you could actually.
Oh, MESA filing hatching.
Yeah, that could be.
You haven't labeled it, anyway.
Yeah, but I remember seeing something with a lot of hatching on it.
Okay.
It's in, I somehow can't keep my piles straight.
Habitat is being protected on that lot.
Yeah, I think so. There's some sort of a.
Page one forty-eight, can I get?
Two, four.
Arthur, I was a bit surprised about.
Yeah, here it is. This one has all those lines.
Yeah, that's what it is.
From the people from Wrights Landing, and no, no one supporting this action. I don't think they understand that the town has, the town has done this to this property.
Right. And it's an inadvertent result, perhaps, but the town did, but the town did do it. And we're just trying to operate literally within the definitions of the bylaw. As I said, we considered other ways to deal with it, like the secondary lot, but this seems to be the most straightforward way.
We might want to hear from the audience, if there's anybody there.
Hi.
I'm not, I'm not chairing the meeting, I'm sorry.
You, would you like to speak? Anybody in the audience? Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Mark.
Can I have a microphone for you, or is the microphone?
Yeah, the microphone, and you need to give your name for the record.
Hi, thanks for having a meeting this afternoon. My name is Elise Perezada. My husband and I wrote a letter, along with several others. They are neighbors who object outside of just the Wrights Landing subdivision. Bruce and Linda Ladoo actually wanted to attend the hearing as well today, but unfortunately, their daughter was hospitalized, lies yesterday after a field hockey puck to the face. So they are not able to attend today. You know, we did talk a lot about the lug three zoning in Tom Nevers. That was one of the reasons that we bought out there. We love the open space. We love how it's not like Cliff is or other neighborhoods in Nantucket that feel much more developed. Arthur brings up that Coffin Road was built in the nineteen nineties, but the Phillips only bought the lot within the past couple of years, so they were well aware of the road that ran through it when they purchased the property. So I think the situation is quite different from that at Six Coffin Road, which I know that you heard previously. Six Coffin Road previously had a building permit and a foundation already in the ground before Coffin Road was completed, so I don't think that that sets precedent in this case. I think our concern overall is that anyone at this point, you know, could come in and say, well, I might be lug three zoning, but you know, I'd like to change it and add another structure. As of now, the Phillips have a main house, a guest house, a pool, and a pool house on Lot A, so I don't feel that they've been harmed from developing the property that's there. I'm in the meeting today, but you have received several other letters, again, from neighbors outside of Wrights Landing, from people on Tom Nevers Road, from people on Van Fleet Circle, and I think those concerns are important to think as you look about this specific variance.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Who'd you speak?
Good afternoon. My name's attorney Michael Wilson, and I am here on behalf of Kimball Brown, who's a director butler at Eleven Van Fleet Circle. And you may see on the map the structures that are located on the backside of that Eleven Van Fleet property are tight up in that triangle. Mr. Brown would also join in the neighbors' opposition. He doesn't feel as though the variance is appropriate here. He says that even though the Phillips did buy the property, knowing that the road went through it, they've clearly developed the property the way they thought they needed to before, and now that the town has put or required the developers to put in the road, it probably was not the town's intent to create new lots in that process. And so Mr. Brown would ask you to consider that that was not the intent of the planning board when Coffin Road went in, and that the Philip property was likely developed with the entirety of the lot contemplated, because that's what they bought, and they didn't develop this property. He is somebody who would ask the board to deny the application. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
If I might, nobody else. I would comment that the existing improvements that the Phillips have made are far less in terms of ground cover than the total that would be permitted on the lot. In other words, if the whole thing were still considered as a single lot, there would be nothing to stop them, for example, from constructing a, they have two dwellings on the, on the remainder of the property, but there'd be nothing to stop them from building a garage, a barn, you know, a structure which could be quite.
Tertiary dwelling.
Tertiary dwelling, well, that wouldn't be very big, but you know.
No, but in concert with a garage.
Or a pretty good-sized barn. Again, that's not their intent, and they're not looking to do anything along that line, but it's not as if they've completely maxed out the overall property.
So, Arthur, if this did not go through and it remained one lot, even though there's a street dividing it, so it's not, doesn't fall in with lot within the bylaw, like, say for instance, a barn, could they build that on what's now being called Lot B?
Sure they could.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
So they can still, so they could still develop Lot B, but in a different, not in a, in a.
Sold.
It wouldn't be a separate marketable lot.
Right, exactly.
And it could be sold off separately.
And they could still put a curb cut on Coffin Road there, and could still have traffic and all that.
All of the above.
Would they have to get a planning board approval for a second curb cut?
Yes.
Yeah. That would be the only.
But I don't think that, see, that would be a, that probably wouldn't be a problem.
Actually, there already has been an additional curb cut on Coffin Road. When they purchased the property, it was eight Marcus Way, which was the original curb cut. They changed it, made a curb cut on Coffin Road, and then now there's the request for this second lot B that's coming.
Right, so that would be a third curb cut.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, just come over.
You have to go to the microphone, and announce your name.
Hi, my name is Stephen Philip. I'm a builder in Nantucket, and I've been here for thirty-five years. I have my kids in Nantucket High School, and I've been serving the community for a long time, and I've been trying to do this the right way, the best way that I can possibly do. And we bought this property, and when we bought this property, they told us that it could be subdivided. That's when we bought it. Now, we have, we own the road coming back and Coffin Road. We own quite a stretch of that road going all the way into our property. Wrights Landing has an easement from our property onto their property. So the fact that they have an easement, it means that they have an easement from us, and it doesn't really matter if someone, if someone owned something twenty-five years ago, and I would have bought something, and I bought into it, I'm taking my money and I'm buying into it. So it doesn't really matter. I'm buying that person's problem. You know, if someone, if someone built something ten years ago, and they didn't pay their bank bills, and I bought it without researching with a good lawyer, what happened then is that I have to then pay those bank bills. I'm sorry, I'm getting emotional. All of my, all of the Beaver Creek, I'm sorry, all of the people, our neighbors next door, they're fighting us in this, but yet they came, they sent a, they sent a real estate agent to us, offering to buy our property to put a tennis court on it, right? And we told them that the property's not for sale. We want to build something for my family. And so they're trying to do, you know, do more than what we're trying to do. But now, what they're trying to do is that they're trying to use psychology, because they're thinking if this wasn't passed, then they'll have the opportunity to keep it the way that they want to keep it, or they can buy it from us and put a tennis court. So my thing is, is that we're not trying to do anything that illegal, we're just trying to do it the right way, and that's all this whole thing has been about. Thank you so much.
Oh, hang, sorry.
I just wanted to say again, our, we didn't, as a neighborhood, approach to buy a tennis court. We were told that you were looking to unload the lot, the lot. We talked about it as a neighborhood as a possibility, and we didn't hear anything back about that. We did ask if you were interested in talking about your plans for the lot, so that we could come to some sort of agreement through the neighborhood, but we heard that you weren't interested in talking about it, which is why we're here.
But you did, but you did say, I'm sorry.
Do you have to address through, through us?
I can just, do you want me to say it real quick?
Oh, can you just state your name?
Carrie Philip.
Okay.
Sorry. John Trudell approached Stephen directly as representing the Wrights Landing homeowners when he came, and offered to purchase it as possibly a tennis court location. That's what he told Stephen, so. But also, we only have one access to the property, we have one driveway off of Coffin Road, we don't have another curb cut, we just have one curb cut right now, just to clarify that.
And can you just clarify, you said that you're keeping this for the family?
Yes.
There's no intention of selling the lot off?
No, we want to, we want the main house is for sale.
Oh, the main house is for sale?
Right.
Got it, okay. Thank you, Jeff. Okay. Anybody have any questions, comments? Thoughts?
I think that, you know, they bought it with the road going through it, so they knew that there was a road, but at the same time, the town created a road going through a lot, and you know, our definition is that a lot cannot be divided by a street, so the fact that the town put a street in there, the town knew they were creating another lot, and, you know, I get the difference between the last applicant where they had already built on their house, built on their, before the improvement, but I don't, you know, there is a road that exists there, the definition is clear.
Question from Mr. Reed.
Sure.
Just not clear on one thing. I think you said, could you just tell us what they could do today on that lot without relief from the board, versus what they can do if it's officially turned into a separate marketable lot?
They could build any structure that would not exceed the ground cover on the overall lot, which is nearly two hundred thousand square feet, with, I think, something like, what have we got at the present time, twenty-four hundred or something like that, a ballpark of ground cover. So they'd be able to go more than double the amount of existing ground cover on the lot with any structure other than a dwelling.
Okay.
Maintaining all necessary.
Tertiary dwelling.
Huh?
A tertiary dwelling.
A tertiary, and it could, it could contain, with a planning board special permit, a tertiary dwelling.
But as a matter of right, they could build.
As a matter of right, they could.
A barn.
They could build a barn, they could build a pretty good-sized barn, maintaining all the setbacks and operating within ground cover.
Couldn't have a kitchen.
Couldn't. Be for occupancy.
Not, not a kitchen, no.
Yeah.
Only if it was a tertiary dwelling.
Only for a tertiary dwelling.
So what they get in doing a subdivision, or the separate lot, is a dwelling.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And the ability to.
But they could still convey, convey that, but they can't convey as a separate buildable lot for a dwelling.
You wouldn't be able to convey it for anything, because you can't put an accessory structure on without a dwelling.
Yeah.
Well, you could put a garage, can't you now?
Oh, I know, G three.
Oh, you can put an accessory structure up.
Yeah, but Mark is right. You can't, you can't have an accessory structure unless you have a primary structure. But as treating the whole thing as a single lot, they would be able to build a structure, as we've just gone through, of any type, any size.
Much bigger, actually.
Larger than conformance with.
In conformance with the maximums allowed by zoning.
They have about thirty-five hundred square feet of ground coverage left.
Right.
If it's included as one lot.
And they'd be reduced to approximately a thousand.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
So it's actually in some ways a benefit, because the density is less.
That's right.
Or the building density. I suppose the people density might be more. Any other thoughts? Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to.
Okay, so us five, okay, thanks, Joe.
I'll make a motion to approve the relief requested.
So do we want to condition that in any fashion? Do we want to condition that on the planning board approval for an A and R subdivision? I mean, they're going to have to do it.
Right, it would have to.
Do we want to condition that in terms of the overall size, only one single-family dwelling, one zoning shed? One story or two? Oh, it would be two-story.
One, no.
It would be two-story, just based on the footprint being. It would be two-story just based on the footprint being like 1,000 square feet.
No, no, he's talking about the shed.
I think they've only got, I mean, they really only have, they have such a small window to work with. Do we need to condition it?
I don't think so.
I don't think so either.
I, I just, as part of the staff report, we were asked to look at whether it made any sense to condition this based on the opposition that was in place by Rights Landing individuals, kind of honoring the fact that they're having an issue with, with something that the town actually created. I mean, I, I'm fine if you want to condition it on what they're allowed to do, which we think is 1,000 square feet.
About 1,000.
Is it about 1,000?
It's 34.
Well, it depends on the, the lot area that I have in the plan. I've seen, it shows the lot line to the middle on Coffin Road, so I don't know what the actual lot area would end up being, but a little less, so it would be about 1,000.
It's labeled as 34.
Yeah, I have 35, 447.
Yeah, so it would be 1,015 or something.
Yeah, it's a slightly odd situation because the plan is going to have to show the lot line as being the middle of the road on, on an A&R plan because otherwise you're creating a new road, a new subdivision road, even though it's improved in accordance with subdivision approval. So I think we actually do get the...
Benefit.
The benefit of that area, which is, which is fairly small.
Yeah.
I, I mean...
So you'd go to the other side of Coffin Road, not to the center? Is that what you're saying?
No, we go to the center.
Okay, which is how it shows on this plan at 35, 447. So the ground coverage would be 1,050 plus or minus.
I think, I mean, we can condition it, but I think that the confines of the lot and the ground cover are going to limit them enough that... Unless somebody sees a burning, I mean, I totally appreciate the concerns of the neighbors. I just, I don't really know that any of these conditions would have any teeth because they're just, it's just what exists anyway.
Right, right.
I trust at the end of the day, there will be less density and less buildings in this particular request than what may happen in the future. The way they've set up the house, the large house, the pool, the cabana, and the septic, you know, it's very limiting in terms of what other things could physically be built on Lot A.
Okay.
So I make a motion.
Wait, did somebody second?
I second.
Oh, you did second.
Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is it unanimous?
Yep. Thank you.
We're going to take a quick break. It's on me, it's on her.
Okay, I gotta find this next... Set of documents. I know, and it's just up on one of the plans. I thought so, I never seen it. Take advantage of it.
I'm here for a two-story grain silo, but it's two-story.
And it's a circle.
If they come after that two-story thing, like they shed, I'm going to, I'm going to be willing to...
I would be excited if it wasn't a two-story.
Okay, so...
Yeah, shed porch, that's what it's going down to.
But there is, you know, a shed can be or may be.
But it's not...
I don't think the intent, I knew it was two stories, it was one story, but I think it was a shed.
Put a heart in there. We can build, put a heart in there.
She didn't have, she didn't need a building.
She has a new elevator shed.
No, I'm going to build a two-story shed now in the corner of my property.
Margaret, you're not sitting on 69 Milestone?
You need, you need me?
All right, let's do it. Maxwell, 1917, Maxwell E. King, Margaret King, it says it has, and I'm all on the road.
Make sure you're talking to Michael, please.
Return yours off.
Ed's microphone?
No. All right. Go ahead, explain what's going on.
All right. This building has existed since I believe 2003, I think that was the, the original permit date. And it existed as like a, you know, just a studio, and then when the tertiary dwelling option came up, the clients wanted to convert it to a tertiary dwelling. And so we did that, and as it went through the whole review process, Marcus flagged it for zoning concern because it was a change of use. But in talk, in speaking with Eleanor, she advised me that since the permit had been issued and that it had run 10 years with the setback violations, that that would not be, no longer be a concern. We're not doing anything more in that area other than changing the use. In the area outside of the setback, we are popping the gable up to add a second floor loft sleeping space.
Can we add a parking space, correct?
There's plenty of parking.
Okay.
Yep.
Help me out on a tertiary, so this is a tertiary dwelling, right?
The planning board has approved it as a tertiary dwelling, yes.
And I thought that, getting, getting to the shed question, I thought the tertiary dwelling had a limitation in terms of, let's say, usable floor space.
Yes, it does. It's 650 square feet.
And is the loft included in that?
Yes, it is, yep. It was, in fact, the area over the bathroom, which is also the area that has part of its, the structure in the setback, couldn't be touched because of this concern about the extra square footage. So we're, I was very deliberate about this.
Again, just to help educate me, if you have a garage...
This wasn't a garage.
No, I know that. It's a different case. If you have a garage attached to a tertiary dwelling, do they count the garage as tertiary dwelling space?
No, no, they don't. You can, you can separate...
Just the dwelling space.
Very recently, I had a, an application that I put before the planning board where it had existed as a two-bay garage, and we were able to carve out 650 square feet of one of the garage bays and call that a tertiary dwelling without changing the structure at all, just putting, you know, egress doors and the like.
Fireproofing.
Yep.
Okay, so...
We're not increasing any violation. I mean, there's nothing...
Yeah, rewind. Why, why, this was built without benefit of a building permit?
No, it had a, it had a building permit in 2003.
Yeah.
And I think it was something that was moved on and they put the foundation down and Jack Dunn signed off on it. I don't know if that tells...
So it had a CO at one point?
It has a, it's had a...
It has a certificate of...
It's had a CO as a studio since 2003, and as of 2013, it would have been considered grandfathered.
Based on the change at the state level this past year, 10-year statute.
Yep.
All right, and, and what you're proposing to do is to, I was listening, but I guess I wasn't paying attention. You're proposing to go up, but not in the setback?
Yes, exactly. Nothing is, nothing is changing in the setback. That, that part of the building just, it stays as is, I mean, other than whatever the two or three square feet that is now tertiary dwelling in that setback.
So you're raising the roof?
Inside the setback we are, or I mean, well, whatever, inside the property.
So you're here for a change of use only, though, because it's not, it's not affecting...
Yeah, I mean, specifically, we're here for a change of use that affects, that because it, part of it is in the setback.
Right. But, but your expansion outside of setback is immaterial to us.
It's immaterial to this application, I believe.
What is the 12.8 dimension to?
That is to the bulkhead, going to a basement, old basement.
Well, I do, I just want to know what it is. I just want to be clear that...
So what, is it point, point C on the plan? That is to the bulkhead.
Is that existing?
That is existing. The foundation is existing.
So you're not changing that?
That's, nothing is changing in that regard.
Other than the height.
Other than the height, which again, it's within the property, the buildable area.
So if the planning board granted you a special permit...
It wasn't a special permit, it was just a tertiary dwelling, which is a by rights...
Oh, I thought it was a special permit. Oh, okay, okay.
There's nothing special about this.
You still, you still have to go to the planning board to get the tertiary dwelling, but it's by right if it's...
Yeah, we, we already did that.
No, I understand.
We're just, we're just hung up right now at Marcus's desk.
Because of this slight encroachment.
Because of the slight encroachment and the change of use.
All right. And it complies in every other way, ground cover?
Yes.
Et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Not by much. 2.9, is the shed two or three stories high?
It says one story, what would for instruction?
It's got an underground footprint of 6,000 square feet.
It's sort of like an upside-on mushroom, Ed.
Can I make a motion to grant the relief request?
Would you please?
I'll second.
Okay, let's move on. I'm sorry.
Is there anybody in the public who wants to speak about this? No.
So I make my motion again.
I'll second again.
Okay. Any further discussion?
No.
No, all is in favor, stay out.
Aye.
Okay, see ya, thank you.
Thank you.
27. Well, one, two, three, four...
Do you have, do you have one of these in here?
Michael's in the audience.
All right, Michael, you should come back to this because I think you may have been on this years ago.
What is that you just said, I'm sorry?
Dr. Michael? Oh, sorry, 2117, Mary Ann Hanley, trustee of 86, main nominee trustee.
Thank you, Mary Ann Hanley. What we are asking for is a special permit to do some renovations in the existing side yard, which doesn't conform, which involve enclosing a portion of an existing porch, extending the porch, and adding, changing the new basement access and adding a new deck and stairs. We're also doing some placement of windows and doors in portions of the dwelling, which are already located in the existing side yard setback. We are eliminating actually some of the non-conformities by removing the deck and I think it's just the deck, and changing around the basement access now comes in pretty close to the neighbor's property. There's also a small set of stairs that goes over the lot line. We have an easement for that, but that lot line encroachment will also be eliminated as a result of the new work. We are also demolishing an existing garage, which is in the side yard setback, and moving it into conformity, making it a little bit smaller. The change has been approved by HTC. To my knowledge, there's no neighborhood opposition to this application as opposed to the opposition that was voiced several years ago. I spoke with the immediate butter this morning, Mrs. Holmes, and she said she's all for it. She thinks the plan is great.
Okay.
Perhaps this was another application, but weren't some people complaining about the lack of maintenance on this property?
I think that's been taken care of.
That's been taken care of?
I think, I mean, I've seen it, it looks...
Okay.
When my client, when this property was purchased by my client, it is, wasn't in an extreme state of disrepair. His goal, and he's been working quite closely with Penn Austin and Brian Pfeiffer, is to restore it to its former historic significance, and I believe the neighbors are quite happy the windows aren't going to be falling out onto the street anymore.
Okay.
Well...
So this is a, go ahead, Lisa.
No, it's okay, go ahead. I think, well, I was going to just say, my only concern about this being on the administrative as opposed to coming to the meeting was because of all the previous concern with the second floor deck. And I also felt like it was getting taller within the side yard setback, so it should actually get relief. But if there's, I guess, no...
The second floor deck doesn't look accessible, though, does it?
There is no second floor deck proposed. It's going to be a flat roof, so it's historically more correct.
Back in the debt.
But people won't be climbing out the windows to have a party out there.
It is getting taller within the setback than what's there today, but that's the only... That was mildly concerned, was just making sure that the neighbors were notified and had the opportunity to speak.
Yeah, the neighbors were notified as part of this, and the neighbors are also notified as part of a zoning administrative decision as far, right now, Eleanor?
I think that, after the fact, and I just think it's not as...
They're still notified.
Yeah, but they're notified after the fact. Most people don't then want to come forward, I mean...
Yeah, we just think if there's a question, it should always come to the board.
But anyway, it's near here, there, um...
Well, it was just in front of the board, how many years ago was it?
Wasn't that, wasn't that...
2011, I think. It was quite, quite a while ago, I think so, it was a while ago.
No, oh my God.
All right, well, so given the fact that nobody's objecting, and I don't remember the other application, but I do vaguely remember that maybe it was going up two stories?
No, it had a deck.
It did have a deck.
It had a deck on the second floor.
That was accessible?
That was accessible, and she was concerned.
You were going to pass desserts back and forth.
Yeah.
Got you, and that is not the case in this application?
No.
I mean, I assume we can condition that, that they can't all of a sudden pop a door in there for access to the upstairs?
Right, I, I...
Right. I, what I think you should say is, any, any more vertical expansion would have to come to the board, so, meaning that their handrail would have to get higher to become a legal deck, they would have to come back to the board.
Well, I think...
Because that's not tall enough for, well, that isn't, there is no handrail there.
It's a roof.
It's a roof.
Yeah, I know it's a roof.
But if, if they decide to turn it into a second-floor deck, they'd have to come back to the board, because they'd have to put a rail in around it.
Fair enough.
Yeah, that's fair enough.
Well, how about if we say it's built in conformity with the HDC-approved plans?
That too.
Yeah. That does it.
Yeah. As long as it has the plans to it, that's fine, too.
Because there's no door going to it, did I say?
No.
No, there's no door, and there's no railing, so...
The railing is, yeah, twelve inches.
Yeah.
Okay. So, was that your motion?
Sure.
Did anybody want to speak to this? No? Okay.
And that's the normal restrictions of no exterior construction, because of where it's located.
It's fine. Do you want to oppose that?
Yep.
What's, yeah.
What are they, memorial data?
Memorial data, yeah.
Yep, okay.
Okay. So, we good with that? Karen seconded. Any further discussion?
I did.
Lisa made the motion. So, the regular board, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, moving on. Fifty-one oh-three, Rugged Scott LLC, Rugged Scott, AKA Beach Plum Forty-B, for the app.
Fire away.
Josh Posner. I was here last, at the last meeting, and giving an update on Beach Plum Village, and the chairman and others raised a number of questions, two in particular. I have submitted a letter describing those two issues, and I would be, let me just kind of summarize what, what I said in the letter, and be happy to answer any questions. So, the two issues were, first, did the sale of one of the market-rate lots in Beach Plum Village make it, impair the ability to limit the profit and see the, do the cost certification process in an appropriate way? There was some concern that by selling this lot, that the buyer, who was going to build, this is the lot that was sold to Cottage and Castle, that when they built it, the profit that they earned, or that they hoped to earn on the development of that lot, would be outside of the framework of the limited profit of Beach Plum Village. And so, what we have done, and what I, what I said last month, and what we've now put in writing and memorialized and reviewed with the regulatory agency, Mass Housing, is an arrangement by which all of the costs related to the development of Lot Two and all of the revenues related to that project will be incorporated within the cost certification, will be submitted along with all the rest of the costs for the whole project. And as I said, we've reviewed this with Mass Housing. They have responded, just this morning, with a, an email saying that that's what they would do, is that they would be able to take this data and this information and incorporate it into the cost certification. And so, I would hope that that explanation and arrangement, I think we also sent you a, a letter from the buyer of Lot Two, the current owner and developer, Mr. Feely, confirming that he would make all of the accounting data available. So, I hope that that is a satisfactory resolution of that issue. It is an unusual arrangement. It isn't the way most FortyBs are done. The reason we did it, as I tried to explain last month, and as I explained a little bit in the letter, was this has been a challenging project. We are trying to get it finished. We are trying to build sufficient momentum, and doing this piece of the transaction was something that I believe is helpful to accomplish the overall goals of the, of the project. And I think that we've now structured it in a way that it can be fully incorporated into the cost certification.
Go ahead.
Were you foreclosed either by the state Forty-B laws or the decision on Antucket for selling lots?
I don't believe I, I don't believe I am.
Well, there's some, there's a lack of clarity on that issue. I mean, talking to our consultant, he's certainly never seen it, and it, I don't think there's ever been a Forty-B, which is a straight land deal. Because we, the ZBA makes, has an agreement, if you will, a comprehensive permit with the developer, to develop that property, to develop those affordable units. And all of a sudden, if, if the developer were to sell the entire subdivision or individual lots, all of a sudden, especially if they were individual lots, and let's say for a reason after forty builders involved, you have forty people that, you know, whereas arguably, your control was within one, with, with having one developed. So, I, I'm not, it's not that I don't believe you, but I'm not satisfied with the answer that you weren't foreclosed.
Okay. I know that there was another layer, that Jamie, who already had a presence on the project, is now breaking off on his own on, on one, and I understand that, but I've just, I, I seem to recall, and I'm not talking about this particular, because I didn't sit on this, I don't...
I didn't either.
I mean, it was a long process. But I, I have a recollection, and maybe it's not a good one, that you can sell lots in a Forty-B.
Maybe, but we need somebody to tell us that. And then, if you want to sell lots, you have to come back and modify the comprehensive permit. I'm not making any judgment as to whether or not you can or can't, because I don't know the answer.
Mm-hmm.
Or, but you ha, I, I do, I am, do feel pretty strongly, and I think I'm right on this one, you have to come back and modify a comprehensive permit, because it was not contemplated.
I agree.
Yeah, because otherwise, it would just, there's no reason to have a comprehensive permit if there's no oversight.
A comprehensive permit, this encumbrance on title. Yet just ignore the fact that it exists. So, if somebody, you know, somebody takes title, it's taking title subject to the permit, and anything that's built on the law has to conform with the permit. You want to change it? Yes, you would certainly want to have to come back, like we, it has to conform with the permit.
So, if it doesn't say, if it doesn't specify in the decision that he can't sell lots, I would think, and he, and it turns out he can, I would think that, once he conveys that lot, that the profitability of that lot with the next owner doesn't go into the till at the end of the, but I could see how you would argue...
I disagree with that, but I may be wrong.
I think it does. It's on, it's on the title. It's an encumbrance, so the lot is still encumbered by that comprehensive permit, even if you sold it to Sue and Sally Meriwether from DC, who are going to come here for the summer, like, they still are subject to that. They took title with that on there, which I can't...
I don't, I don't disagree.
Well, because the pro forma, et cetera, the comprehensive permit was based on building out these units. This is my projected profit. You know, I'm not exceeding the X percentage, whatever that percentage was, and if I do, the town is going to share in it again. Do I think realistically that ever is going to happen? No, but it's, it is a function, I think, of, of, well, protecting Forty-B in general. We don't want anybody to think that there's something improper going on.
The way around it.
Yeah, and, and, so...
But, so my other question is, so, so you sold to Jamie, and so there's some sale price and some profit there, or something, some number amount of consideration for that whole lot?
Correct.
So, that gets counted towards your, towards the calc, the profit calculation? And then, you're going to calculate, again, Jamie's costs, so that, okay, all right, so that will include the cost of the lot and take that out of any profit? Okay, all right, sorry.
I mean, the, the issue is this, is if I have a Forty-B and I'm restricted by law in my profitability...
Yeah.
And I sell all the lots for no profit, or some, or right under the threshold is what you would do.
I agree with you.
And then, my builder slash partner builds them out and reaps a huge profit. And by the way, I'm not saying this is happening, but then, all of a sudden, it's not cost certified.
No, I agree with you. I agree with you. I mean, I think if Jamie builds a, you know, building, building homes in a Forty-B and with having all these parameters and building a straight-spec house is, those are two very different animals. So, I, I guess what I, I appreciate this letter, but I feel like, and I don't know, have, have we seen the email?
I saw the email.
Okay, because I, I checked my email, but not, maybe not after 12 o'clock, so maybe I didn't get it, but...
I also would like, you know, I saw the email today at roughly 11 o'clock.
Just, it just happened.
Oh, maybe it was 11 o'clock.
Yeah, no, I know. But I would like to follow up with the, with Greg, or, I can't remember the name, Jennifer, just to see, to read between the lines.
And I think, I think I would like, well, I guess I should read the email, but I think I would like to see, because if, you still have other unbuildable lots, I mean, not unbuildable, sorry, you have, still have...
Other vacant.
A couple vacant lots, right, that are not earmarked for, or are they all earmarked affordable?
No, there's twelve homes that have not been built. Three are affordable and nine are marked.
So, you, so that, so you could do this a few more times?
Yeah, I, I'm not going to do any more without making sure that everybody is completely clear on what the plan is and that it is 100% incorporated within the cost certification, including the building and eventual sale of the house. That was always the intention. As I said in my letter, I hadn't focused on that when we put this transaction together this way, primarily because I don't think we're anywhere near being close to the profit limit, and so, just, it was kind of the farthest thing from my mind. I see the point. I take your point. I think that this is a very responsive way of coming back on the issue. I'm not taking the position that we have the right to sell the lot and that the revenue from the lot is what will be counted, and that the town does not have any further interest beyond that. I'm not taking that position. I'm taking the position that all of the costs and all of the financial impacts of the development through completion will be incorporated into the cost certification, as if nothing had been sold out to Jamie Feely and anybody else.
I mean, I, I in large measure am satisfied with that, as long as, again, I would like to follow up with Mass Housing, just, just to make sure we're all on the same page. And if somehow you get clarification that selling the lot is kosher, selling another lot, I should say, you know, that's another step.
Right.
And then, I, now, then, we could have the discussion as to whether or not you have to come back for modification, or if it's insubstantial, substantial, et cetera. So, I mean, I don't know, in a perfect world, obviously, this would have been discussed ahead of time, rather than asking for forgiveness, but it seems to be a reasonable solution.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I think that, from what I've heard, if he had come to, to this board seeking the ability to sell a, a lot out and remain in the, the profit pool, we probably would have proved it.
Yeah, and my question would be, why would you sell it if you're a developer and you're, you're arguably, on the face of it, giving up profit? Because obviously, Mr. Feely would like to be making money, I assume. Otherwise, why the heck would he...
I only think of, I mean, raise some cash?
Yeah, cash flow. I, I get that, but, um, no, and Josh, it's sad.
I'd be happy to tell you my thinking on it, if you're interested, but, you know, there's...
Yeah, go ahead. More rather than me say it.
Yeah, I mean, we, I did it because we wanted to sort of expand the product, if you will. We're doing a certain kind of home. We know how to do a certain kind of home. Cottage and Castle is our contractor, and so, it's not like we don't know how they build. Feely does a couple of homes a year, or has for the past number of years, on a speculative basis, and he has a little following and a brand and his own special sauce of how he approaches, and we thought a kind of stepped-up, souped-up, if you will, you know, higher-end version of what we were doing was going to be good for the community. It might establish more momentum, faster absorption, bring in a different market, establish a higher price point, have more variety in terms of housing styles, and it would just help. You know, we've got forty homes to sell, or thirty market-rate homes to sell. We have sixteen more to go. So, coming up with ideas that move things along is something that I, is my job.
I do have a question on that particular issue. Is, is Jamie's quote-unquote "special sauce" on the inside, or the outside, or both?
It is, the outside is completely controlled by the permit. The footprint is the same. The shell is the same. The home that's being built is the approved home.
Same trim details, same...
Same trim.
If I'm driving down the street, I cannot differentiate.
He's got a little nicer window boxes. He's got, I think he might have a little different light fixtures on the outside. He got a special permission from you guys, actually, to paint it a different color, gray, than was a pre-approved color. But other than that, you can't tell...
Because it...
Well, and then, on the outside, he's got a fire pit in the backyard and a hot tub built into the ground, not visible from the street, but that's part of his, so he's got nicer outdoor living, so to speak.
I could, the reason I bring it up is because, number one, they, they're not supposed, you're not supposed to be able to differentiate if you go down, if you run, drive down the road. And secondly, somebody called me this morning and asked the question, it was Tucker Holland, I'm not, he sent me an email, which I think Eleanor got, so, and he probably sent it to everyone, Eleanor?
I...
Maybe not. It might have only been to me, but everyone will get it. He has received calls as to, there, there appears to be more and more differentiation between market and affordable, and that is not supposed to happen. Again, I'm not...
I'd like to see the, I'd like to see what he's saying, because...
Well, again, he, he...
Most people can't, most people have a very hard time. They have to spend time looking. Maybe they would notice an air conditioner in a window instead of not having an air conditioner in a window. There's nothing different about the windows, the trim, the roof, the porches.
Okay.
The landscaping is equivalent... The landscaping is equivalent quality.
Again, this is, for lack of a better word, hearsay, because he heard it from somebody else, and then he calls me, I'm just bringing it up, that, whether or not you, for instance, if you found out you could indeed sell lots and, and somebody wanted to change the outside to, you know, that, that, that can't happen.
So you'd have to come and get approval from the governing authorities, which would be you and.
Right. You can do whatever you want, as long as you ask permission within reason. Okay, so, we good on that first, the cost certification, and then the, the notion of whether or not you can do it again, to me, still seems like an open question. I don't think either one of us has gotten a clear answer on that.
So is that for us to follow?
I raised it with, with mass housing, because I, you know, I do have an understanding with Feely that if he wants to do a second one, that we will. If this is problematic and is not allowed for some reason, we won't do it, and I'm going to come back and clarify and make sure that, and I'm going to think some about whether there's a different way of structuring the transaction in a way that's better and accomplishes similar objectives.
Okay, which does bring me to another point, at the last meeting, you stated that you had, for lack of a better word, presold some lots to buyers and then had a contract to build.
Right. We don't have any that are outstanding right now, we did do two of the homes that way, and so, rather than a buyer closing on the house when it's completed, which is the way most of the sales have gone, on, in two, on two occasions, we have had a closing on the land and a construction contract to build the building within a timeframe and to plans and specifications that are consistent with the permit.
But that construction contract was with you.
Was with me.
I thought that's what you said last time.
And so when you think about, what am I buying, you're buying the combination.
Yeah, that, that's totally, if, if the contract was.
And I didn't ask for permission to do that, and maybe I should have, but.
No, that doesn't seem, if, as long as the contract was with you and all the money was going through you, you then, I assume, had a contract with Jamie?
Yeah.
Yeah, that seems totally kosher to make.
It was basically just a way of changing the cash flow on the project.
Yeah, it, I would, would have been uncomfortable with it if you had sold the lot, the half-finished house, and then Jamie became the contractor on it, but you remained the contractor.
The buyer has a contractual relationship with me and my company.
Right.
To deliver the house.
So.
And I have a contract with Jamie to deliver what we need, but.
So that seems okay with me.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, then the other issue, I think, that we had was the garages.
The garages, all right, so, I have, so I wrote way too long on the garages, so I apologize, I was, I, my usual excuse when I go on too long like that is, I could have made it shorter, but I didn't have the time. I think, I've got a little handout, which I hope will help. Okay, so, the question is about easements that have been placed on a number of affordable homes for the benefit of a market rate home that will, that build and, and maintain a garage on that easement. There are a number of garages in Beach Plum Village, there's approval for seventeen out of the forty. That was proposed and approved by the zoning board in two thousand and eight, and there's a decision with a plot plan and a garage location for all forty homes, that's part of the record. Four of those garages are on affordable homes. There was never a, any plan that affordable homes would get private garages, but the reason that they were on there was, prior to the submission of that, I wanted to see how many garages we could fit in Beach Plum Village, and so we established some criteria, and the architects went to work, and they identified seventeen places where we could fit garages, four of which were on affordable lots. One of those garages had on the plan, back in two thousand and eight, a dotted line around it saying, "Proposed easement." The idea for that garage from the beginning was that it would be a maintenance garage for the community, and it was built, and it's functioned that way for however long it's been there, eight years. It's where the pool equipment goes and the tennis court, and it's on a affordable lot. We then did that two more times, where, in order to accomplish a sale of a market rate home that didn't have a garage on it, we were able to say, we'll build this garage, which is approved, in this location, and put it on an easement, permanent easement that runs with you, reducing the size of that affordable home's usable space, so to All happened before the affordable homeowner decided whether to buy the house or not, before they moved in, in some cases, before the house was even built. I thought, with the garage being approved, which it was, that this was something that I was allowed to do. I've come to believe, after talking this through over the last month, that I should have come to the zoning board to get permission to do that, before I did it. There's a million easements in Beach Plum Village, and so, doing easements was not something that was unusual, we were doing them all the time for all kinds of purposes. So, we now have three easements on affordable lots, no, I'm sorry, we have four easements on affordable lots, three of which have garages, one of which was approved with, to have an easement back in two thousand and eight, two of which didn't have any easement approval, but the garage was approved, and there's one more like this that I won't do. I am happy to not, not continue this practice. It was something that, as I said, was done in order to enhance the ability to sell the market rate homes, which we've been trying very hard to do for this whole ten-plus-year time period. In the handout that I gave you, I did some calculating, to say, after the easements for these garages are taken into consideration, what is the usable space left for the affordable homes that are, that are there? And what it shows is that they are within ten percent of the average size of the usable space for all of the affordable lots. The yellow section shows the usable area of the four lots that have the easements. And if you go all the way to the left, you'll see the lot area, the nominal lot area varies quite a bit, because it might have other easements, it might have a habitat easement, or a stormwater easement, or a road easement, or other kinds of easements. Now it also has a garage easement. When you take all of those away, this is what you end up with. Basically, they're all within ten percent of four thousand feet, which is roughly the size that the affordable lots are. So, the reason that, that they end up that way is because, is really kind of common sense, if you think about it. The affordable homes that were big enough to have a garage on them were a little bit bigger to begin with, and so when you take away the garage on an easement, it's just kind of bringing it back down to roughly the size that it would have been, that the ones that aren't big enough to have a garage are already. So, apologies for all the complexity, but that's the history of it, may be better just to try and answer some questions.
I have a question for you, and I'm not looking at my phone, I, I'm accessing something that Eleanor had sent me before, so, just let me find it. So, Josh, you came and got permission for lot fourteen, twenty, and twenty-four for garages, it says garage approved May twenty, May ninth, two thousand and eight, CBA decision. Why, and, and in the first one on fourteen, you're saying that the easement was also approved. I have, I have something from Eleanor that says, "Per the attached document, book one one, four, two, page one, seventeen garages were approved for sitting on the following lots," I won't bore you with the market rate ones, "but lot fourteen, subject to garage access and use easement for benefit of lot eleven." And.
That's the tennis court.
That's the tennis court. Lot twenty, subject to garage access and use easement for benefit of lot seventeen. Lot twenty-four, subject to garage access and use easement for benefit of lot twenty-three. So, it sounds to me like you got permission at one point for both the garage and easement.
May I clarify?
Yes, please.
And I believe it's better to clarify this stuff before, subject to subsequently bein deeds and other documents of record.
Oh, so this was, this wasn't part of the comprehensive permit?
So that's the actual situation, there currently lots that have been sold are built.
Got ya.
Improved and were sold with those easements encumbering the lots.
What is, what is, I think you sent me only the truncated portion of, I think you said that. What is the attached document, plan, or book one, one, four, two, page one?
It's in, it's in the packet, in part two of your packet, and Josh actually sent it as well, sort of this submission the other day. It's the technical clarification correction to the CBA, the top permit that was related to clarify setbacks.
What page is that?
One, part two, page eleven.
Page eleven, sorry.
So the garage access and use easement for lot fourteen is shown on the plan of that lot, and it's labeled such. The other ones don't have easement language built in on the plan, just shown and structured on the lot.
Okay, I misunderstood that whole thing, I thought you had actually, you know, we had this discussion.
I didn't clarify that well, and I know, but it is clarified, this stuff before.
Okay, I need more time. All right, so the bottom line is, without going through all that, you never got permission for the easements.
For, for two out of the three that are built, I did not get permission for the easement, and for one other easement that we put in place that does not have a garage, we didn't get permission for that either. My plan was I would be coming as a separate matter later, after all of this, you know, then, then all this stuff started coming up, so we postponed that, but that I would eventually come to get permission to put a garage on that easement, since it met the criteria for all the other garages. At this point, the garage, the easement has been granted, but there's no garage on it for lot twenty-seven.
Okay, I misunderstood that, that piece of information that I got, I thought you had gotten permission for three of them, but not that fourth one, but arguably, the garages were allowed, but not the, the easement.
So for lot thirty-seven, will you, what will happen with that?
I think we will not, I mean, I, I wanted to have the discussion with the board and decide what we should do. I've explained where I'm coming from, what the history was, why it's, why it is what it is, I wish I had come before, and I didn't. At this point, we, this is where we are. I think if you look at the chart, the end result, I mean, I think that there's a certain amount of trying to calculate, what is the harm that was done in order to determine how much of a foul was caused, and I think that there's a certain amount of, you know, no major harm, no major foul aspect to this, but.
Well, I don't necessarily agree, the, the garages, and again, you're set to help me out here, because I didn't sit on the original one, and haven't poured over every page, which I'm sure you have, the garage, the garage on fourteen for benefit of the tennis court, that, that was permitted from the very beginning.
Correct.
And the easement was on the plan, I believe, or it was.
Yes, it says, "Proposed easement is on the plan."
So we can make the argument that that was part of the original comprehensive permit, and it's not diminishing the value, if you will, of the affordable house for benefit of a market rate unit, it was for the greater good, right? That was the garage for the tennis court.
Correct.
Right. So, lots twenty and twenty-four, what does it mean when it says the garages were approved in May nine, two thousand and eight?
So if you look at the, if that, if you look at that decision that Eleanor circulated, I have it here, if you flip to lot twenty, and if you flip to lot twenty-four, they'll, they'll, they show garages on, on those lots.
Right, okay, so that was a modification of the original compartment?
Yes.
Clarification.
A clarification.
Well, I think we added a whole bunch of garages. I think that we didn't have anywhere near this number of garages in the original plan, and as, I'd have to go back and reconstruct, to be honest.
I think there was some confusion as to where the garage.
I think that what we had thought was that we would get, we would get permission to put garages based on some language, dimensions, setbacks, et cetera, ground cover, and during the comprehensive permit process, I think we somehow came to the conclusion that everybody would be happier if we just put all of the garages that we might want on the plan, and that's what this document does.
But this plan in two thousand and eight shows the garage on the affordable units twenty and twenty-four.
Right.
But there's no contemplation that they're not for that lot.
Right, and there's no promise that they would be built either.
But there's certainly no mention that they were going to be carved off either.
Correct.
I mean, that, to me, was a major faux, yeah, for lack of a better word, faux pas.
But was it a faux pas on his part, or just on everyone's part, that we, I mean, I don't, I didn't, wasn't sitting on it, but, you know, for the garages to be on the plans, if they were going to be built, they would be, but, but there was the understanding, I think I'm hearing from you earlier, that, that no, garages were never a plan for the affordable units, but they were shown, like, it wouldn't have made sense to draft easements for buildings that may not be done.
Well, if, if you can show through minutes, through tapes, that they still exist, God forbid, I probably sat on it in two thousand and eight, as did you, but.
I mean, I, I.
I mean, if you, if you were upfront about the fact that someday we might easement these off, that's one thing, but if they're shown on a plan, how, how am I to not think that that garage goes with this house?
I don't know, I mean, I didn't sit on it, so maybe we should try to get the minutes, but I think at this point, if, I think at this point, the, there.
Now this is lying right there.
We figured, we figured this out through, basically, just a, I mean, it was like a, Eric, like, right, just through conversation that this was happening, so I think that what we can do now is clean it up, it's not like the affordable unit owners are in here.
Well.
Well, there was one letter.
There's a, that's not necessarily true, and when you're an affordable buyer, and you may or may not have been told, you're either. And when you're an affordable buyer, and you may or may not have been told, you either buy this as is, or get back in line.
Right.
That's not fair. That's, that's, you know, it's not fair to the affordable buyer. The idea is some measure, equality's not the right word.
I get that, but I also think that what Mr. Posner is saying is that in order to facilitate the sale of the market rate units that keep this whole progress, process, or project afloat, being able to offer garages made them, those, those non, the market rate units more attractive to potential buyers. I, you know, looking at the numbers, it doesn't seem like it's that, that they, the total usable square feet, you know, went down that much. And, and this, I'm going to sound horrible, but like, it's, if to get into an affordable house, there, it's affordable, there are things you may have to sacrifice to be able to get there. And in order for him to sell a market rate unit, if he has to promise a garage to make that sale, then, you know, that maybe there has to be some, some give, you know?
Yeah, that's fair enough. It should have been upfront.
It should have been done upfront.
The plan should not have showed this garage goes with this house, which is affordable in this particular case on Lot 20.
But I think what we're hearing from Mary Ann and from Mr. Posner, which I, you know, you guys are both upstanding people. I don't think that, I think that's the truth, that they, that everything was put on the plan.
Well, my problem with that, Susan, is we approve something based on what we're given and told.
Right.
If we're not told that this plan isn't really the plan, we are going to easement these garages off, then we're not approving what we're looking at.
Right.
That's my problem with it. I'm not saying that I have a fundamental problem with the notion of carving off the garage.
Right. I just don't know what we, I don't know whether that discussion happened or not, because I didn't sit on this when it, in 2008, when it was going on.
Well, I would like to think that even in 2008, if that were the case, and I just happen to have Lot 20 open, we would have said, "Go back, do the easement, show us the easement, show us the screening, show us how this is going to work." I just don't think we would have said, "Yeah, carve allowance, do whatever you want," so, without permission. But again, I...
I wish I could remember exactly how this happened. I think that this was, I think that we've now talked about garages and easements and affordable homes about 50 times more than all the rest of it together. It wasn't something that was thought about. This was, how many garages can we fit at Beach Plum to have an option in the future? And if I had noticed it and thought about it, I wouldn't have had it be this way.
Because, Susan, to your point in terms of affordability and giving and taking, the affordable houses are all generally smaller.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, the reason that the market rate unit right next door can't have a garage in their own lot is because it can't fit.
Yeah, no, I know.
So, you know, I don't really think that's fair.
Yeah, but, but, fair, like, that person can't afford the house, they can't afford the market rate house. So, like, they're getting an affordable house, they're getting a below-market rate home, they're getting a home. Like, they couldn't afford it without the other part holding it up. So, without the, if, I'm not saying like, if there wasn't a garage, the guy wouldn't have bought it, but if there wasn't a garage, and the guy wanted a garage, and he wouldn't have bought it, and he went somewhere else, then this project loses a market rate house, and then that puts them one house further behind, being able to build, right? They have to sell three to build one. So, I just think there, and the 2008, we all know the market was in the tank. And so, I think there does have to be some give and take. And yes, sorry, life is just not fair to everybody. Not everybody gets the same exact thing. You just, it's just not how the world works. That's my two cents for today.
Yeah, that's perfectly legitimate.
I tend to agree with you. I think Mr. Posner's been contrite about the whole thing. I just have a feeling that if he was asked whether he would do this project again, that the answer would probably be no.
It's been a long...
So, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think, I think you're probably working your way out of a situation.
You know, I mean, this has been a very, very challenging undertaking. I'm quite happy with where, how it's coming out, to be honest.
It looks beautiful.
As a financial venture, it is not what anybody involved in this wanted or expected. The question is, when you get into a situation like that, what do you do? And so, we've chosen to hang in there, and to do the best we can, and to, at the very least, end up with a beautiful new community, great affordable housing, and set a standard that people in Nantucket can drive through and completely blow away the usual stigma of affordable housing is ugly. And we aren't making any money, but we, I think we are accomplishing that. And the way that we are accomplishing it is through a lot of tenacity and a lot of little moves like this, where you can find one more market rate buyer to kind of get the thing over the hump. So, I should have come in, but I didn't, I wasn't thinking about that. You know, we had never had one pushback on anything having to do with the size of the lots, the configuration. Everybody liked the idea of a quirky-looking, noncookie-cutter project like this. And there was not one thing that I asked for that we didn't get. And I have little doubt that if we had thought of it at the right ti, with the right timing, we could have come back and said, "We don't want to re-carve all these lots and change the deeds and everything, but give us permission to do easements." And we probably would have been approved for that. And I didn't do that, and that's on me. But...
I'm not sure that would have been a slam dunk.
Can I ask a question? All these easements are on lots that are, have not been built out yet, correct? I mean...
No, three of them are...
Only one.
Excuse me?
Oh, with, all of the easements are on lots that have been built.
Except for the one. Right, that's how we figured this out, right? Because you came before us about the garage hadn't been built yet.
These have been built.
And then we realized, then we realized that there were, that this had happened.
So, the people, yeah, that, well, no.
This one doesn't.
So, the people that own this, Lot 27, they already owned it, and then all of a sudden they have an easement as well?
No, they were told they had to buy it.
Right, right.
This all came up because I wanted to put a garage on Lot 27, because now it could fit, because we had swapped it with another house.
Right, right, right.
So, there was less, there was less covered. So, there was room for a garage. So, could we build a garage and give it to the next-door neighbor, so we could sell that house?
Yes, and then we sort of uncovered this other situation.
And that's, that's what's going on.
Do they have the show?
They have to give you...
So, are you still asking for the garage on 27?
Well, I haven't asked yet.
He's not, yeah, but we're not there.
I'm taking this step by step.
He would, I mean, I think we're in agreement, you would have to ask.
Excuse me?
We're in agreement that you would have to come back and ask.
We are absolutely in agreement that I would have to come back and ask. There's language in the decision about how garages that are not pre-approved get asked for, and it involves going to the HTC, which we did. And we got the HTC approval for that garage. But we also need to get permission from the zoning board, and we haven't asked yet.
I mean, arguably, you had to ask, more importantly, for the easements. And those were not asked for.
Correct.
And, you know, can, so that's really what we have to wrestle with.
So, so what do we hope to accomplish today?
I don't think we're...
This is a new hearing, this is a discussion.
Yeah, we're just, we're just chatting about it. I mean, we're, I guess, just, you know, I think we gave some guidance, if you will, on the mass housing issue. Wanted a little more clarity, and then on this one, I think if nothing else, you have to come back and ask for us to bless the, or not bless, the ones that are already done. And if you wanted to do it again, you would definitely, I mean, you have to ask. And again, it would be the same process.
I totally accept that I have to ask. The question is, what do we do about the ones where I didn't, the easement is granted?
Hey, I'm aware.
A buyer, you know, an owner now has an easement, paid for it.
And they understood that when they purchased the property?
Yep.
And the, and the grantor of the easement, the affordable home, also saw that their parcel was encumbered by an easement that had a garage that went to somebody else, and that's the way that is.
The lot 28 was sold, was that easement?
Yeah, I know.
All four...
All houses were all fully furnished.
Well, I was told, for what it's worth, somebody approached me that it was relatively heavy-handed. You either buy, this would obviously be on the affordable unit. You either buy this with the easement, or get back in line. That's not, you know, you can talk about fair, you know, life isn't fair, but you can't be...
But when you buy a house, if you're buying in a development, and the developer has an easement on a property, for, like, you have that choice. Like, I don't understand.
Well, that's fine, but not in a 40B. I get it, if you're not, because you, you got a huge bite at the density apple here. And you cannot take it out on the affordable units. Why not ease, easement off the entirety of every piece of property other than the walk to the house then? And say, "That's what you get." Because that's not what 40B is about. And I don't think it was Josh's intention either, but you can't do that. I mean, I don't think we would have ever approved the greater bite at the density apple if it, if someone came in to us and said, "And we want to take, we want to create these affordable lots, but we don't really want to. We want to give all that land to the market rate units."
Based on my recollection, some of this has been going on for a while, but I believe that the three of the affordable lots, there was never any questions expressed.
About easements?
They specified in the purchase and sales agreement, and in the deeds, and it was no question. I think one buyer, one former buyer was wondering about the easement, and we explained why it was there, and actually offered to give him extended yard area on another, along with other adjacent lots. He said, "No, I don't want that. That's why I don't want it."
Well, he had, he actually has that land. His bushes and his side yard incorporates all that land.
Right.
So, that's, that's in the, he has an easement over half of it, and he could have had an easement over all of it, right?
He had an over all of it. He said, "No, that's fine. I don't want it." So, I'm not sure if you heard from, but...
It's not really the point who I heard from. The point is that, you know, again, the perception is, to me at least, that this was heavy-handed. It was taking it out on the affordable, it was basically fundamentally changing what we, I didn't sit on it.
That lot is the same size as seven other lots within a few percentages. It's not taking it out on anything.
Well, you're, you're taking a quarter of this lot.
The usable area, at the end of the day, after adding back in and taking away, is right there. It's the, it's the, you know, there's three other lots that are smaller, and five other lots that are slightly bigger. So, doesn't mean that somebody doesn't want some, whatever they want to ask for, but in terms of taking it out on people, that's been the whole purpose of building high-quality affordable housing, which we have done at Beach Plum Village, has been the entire motivation of this enterprise. And I wish I'd come in to ask for the easements beforehand, and I'm sorry that I didn't.
Yeah, I'm good with that. So, all I'm saying, I think, is you need to come in, submit an application, and we determine whether it's insubstantial, substantial, and clarify, I think, if you want to do this in one more place, or 10 more places, figure it out now. You wouldn't have to come in one at a time if you want. But any time you wanted to do something like this, and we would have to determine whether first was insubstantial, substantial, and substantial, we have the carrying, et cetera, et cetera. Unless everybody else doesn't agree with that, and...
No, but I don't think that we truly are, we can't be a dead horse. He understands his mistake. We understand what has happened. I think he's going to come back and be more proactive on the subject matter rather than reactive, so I think we're all the same thing.
Is there any going forward with the now planned, and not to go backwards? Most of the easements that are granted are going to be told to Josh, the board, or to the current owners, they would have to probably notify their lenders, just to get...
Well, I, that would be going back on the easements. You mean, like, removing them?
No, we couldn't, we can't.
Well, then I think, I would think if I was the lender, I would want to have this issue cleared up, because it's not, the easement is not on the comprehensive permit plan.
It's not, the easement is a right, as a property owner, an easement can be granted. If the market rate lots had been granting easements among themselves, we wouldn't be having this conversation.
That, that may be the case, but they're...
The only reason we're having the conversation is because there are certain affordable rates, affordable units that have easements on them. I mean, as utility easements, there's, if I wanted to let somebody park their car on my property, I could, can I give them an easement, or do I have to come back here and ask them?
It's a good question. Again, and if you can get greater clarity from some other state entity, I guess, that runs 40B, that says, "Yeah, you can grant easements as much as you want," I'm good with that. You know, I'm not sure you can.
Let me look into what can be done on that score. I think that, I mean, there's, that may be, that may be helpful. That might be helpful. I mean, I don't think they like to get involved in, you know, kind of doing this kind of micro-land planning, but in terms of what's allowable and what's not allowable, that may be...
I'm not saying, Mary Ann, that you can't grant an easement.
Okay.
I'm saying...
That's good stuff.
No, I'm saying that it's part of, this whole subdivision is governed by the comprehensive permit. If the, if some portion of that changes, just like you wanted to come build a gazebo, you have to come back and just ask.
Right. And that's a good, that's a good example. I didn't think I had to come back for a, for a gazebo, but I learned that I did, honestly. I really didn't think I had to, because I had, that was something that was subject to an HTC issue for other technical reasons.
And it's not, he's not changing the lot lines, he's just, it's an easement, so the lots, the lot still remains the same.
The whole thing is governed by, as Josh has said, quote-unquote, "A million easements."
Yeah.
The easements were all part of the original plan. That's why we get the engineering plans, or the site, and the this, and the that. And modifications to those plans need to be approved. Or, or not approved, but they need to be in front of us.
And they're, and as I tried to say in my memo, by the way, not that this, these are contested particularly, but there's a couple of other easements that don't have anything to do with garages, that I did not come and get permission for, because a road had to be extended, otherwise somebody couldn't get into their garage. So, that took land, granted, signed up, you know?
I don't, again, I just don't think that was the intent of, again, I might be totally wrong. I only see one of these every other sun, you know, five years. But I think the intent is, you can't change what you were given permission to do without, and again, it could be as easy as the insubstantial thing. This is an insubstantial change, go for it.
Because I think then we would have to approve what you're talking, those other easements you're talking about right now, too. Like, the land, whatever those are.
So, anyway, again, you get somebody in the state, the state law, they say, "Ed, you're 100% wrong." I'm not looking for additional work here, so I'm good with that. I mean, we can both talk to Greg, or Jennifer, or whoever.
I don't think it's going to be Greg, but I think, let me think about what, what else we can do from here. I appreciate the time that the board has put into this, and it's not how any of us wants to be spending our time, but we do have to sort it out.
Could we, would it, could we do a poll, or is that not appropriate, about what, for the two easement, or the two or three easements that are existing, that we need to come back, come back and be asked permission for, whether, since they already exist, I don't know if that changes anyone's opinion, whether they're substantial or insubstantial?
That's not...
Yeah, we're not, we're not talking about that right now.
No, okay.
I mean, it's, Josh, I think, understands you have to come back, clean... I mean, it's, Josh, I think, understands you have to come back, clean this, some of the stuff up, and moving forward, you have to go through the steps as well.
I wasn't saying to determine them, just to see if anybody goes a little too far. Okay.
But if you want, I can give you an extension till tomorrow to submit something for the August hearing. It was due Monday, but obviously this is extenuating circumstances. Or we can just go for September. It may take more time.
I actually don't know what the technical proposal is that we're going to make.
So I think it's September.
And so I have to, I have to, I have to do some additional research.
Yes, I just wanted to make a proposal for you if you think you would want to.
Yeah, no, I, I get a sense, I think of, I mean, I, this has been helpful, the conversation. So it's on us to figure out what to propose.
Fair enough. Okay, so there's no vote necessary. It's thank you.
Thank you.
We'll see you in September.
May. Are we, on the, on the previous one, on the question of the cost certification, are you, do you want to call Mass Housing, or are we done with that? I had agreed a month ago that we would not enter into any sale on lot two until you were satisfied that we had resolved that issue.
Is lot two the spec lot?
Yeah.
It's on the market now.
It's on the market, but we wouldn't be, I would not allow an agreement or a transaction to go forward on that without being released from my promise that I wouldn't do it until you were satisfied. So I don't know that that was any kind of a formal action a month ago, and I don't know that you need a formal action to undo it, but I don't want to be...
Well, I appreciate your promise. So why don't, if the board wants, I can follow up with Mass Housing. It seems like they said it's, you know, this is what we can do to fix that particular problem. And if that's, you know, I'll just follow up with an email or a call, and I can get in touch directly with you or through Eleanor. Does that work?
Yeah.
Is everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Or does somebody else want to call Mass Housing?
Oh, my God.
You're very good at it.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. So I think that's it, right?
Is there other business?
Oh, God, what's going to catch the death of me? Okay, discussion regarding zoning administration decision approval process. So I'm going to leave that up to you, Eleanor.
So I just would like some clarification, I'm not going to be specific here, obviously, but there have been lately a couple of decisions where I'll have, say, I mean, random example, one board member who has a concern, I will address that board member's concern, and that one, I'd be fine with it, everyone else is fine, I'm clear on that. Then there will be a situation where I hear back from certain people, a majority, they're fine. A so-called majority, because this is not vote. Everyone's fine, or if it's not, what do I give? Or I have a situation that also appears out, where I have two to three people with a similar concern, I address that, they're still concerned, that's what we, I know it's true. But it's that sort of middle ground, I have a question. And I am always hearing back from some people relatively quickly, and others not so much. We all have that for seventy-two hours. People are submitting these with the hope that they're going to go through fairly quickly. I know, you know, I have a lot of other things I do in my job, so it's hard for me to get them as quickly as people like, but when I do finally get to them, I do, I've brought and I've said to these before, a lot of research, and if anybody has concerns, there's more research. There's, so, look at, I've heard from seven of you, but no, six of you, and three of you have the same concerns, I address them. So that's going to be before the board next time. Because this, the actual, it won't be terribly satisfactory for one person, so, which is fine. I don't have an issue, we have a respect that. Where I have some concerns is where I'm, I've got one person who's like, I'm not, I want this to go through.
I sort of feel like if it's the majority, then we should be able to do it.
I just don't know that.
No, I disagree a hundred percent.
If one person has a concern out of seven people?
First, it's not a vote, you don't, we can't discuss it.
No, I know that.
There's no discussion.
Well, actually, that's, if I have a problem, I think I should be sending my problem to you and Edward, not the rest of the board. And this historically has been a very slow responding, the administrator for this board has been very slow in responding in the past. Now, the administrator is very fast at responding to the applicant. And frankly, sometimes it's too fast.
I agree.
And so I think that you're doing a great job, but I tend to think that if one person has a problem, that it's probably worth thinking about coming back to open meeting.
Yeah, the reason I say that, Lisa, is we don't, I don't, I might never know of your concern.
Right.
No one else knows, oh, yeah, that makes sense, and then you did, and, you know, there's no discussion. So if, if, if everybody says it's fine, it's one thing, but if one person has a concern, I think it should come back. Or, as Michael said, I mean, if it wants to filter through me, which I'm not excited about, but I suppose it could, because that doesn't violate open meeting law, but I can just tell you flat out, if one person cares about it...
Right.
I'm going to say, go to board.
Because you know, you, are you kept up to speed with people's concerns?
No.
No, not at all.
That's my point, there can be no cross...
Well, I thought it was only more than two people. I think, I thought two people could have a conversation.
Two can, three can't.
Well, what's happened is, I'll give you an example, is that she doesn't also, I'd say, is anybody else got this question? And I'll say, yes. And I could say, who?
Yeah.
That might be specific, but she's like one of them.
Yeah, I asked you that one day.
And that's a legit question. Am I the only one on this particular lender?
Well, sometimes I say something, and then, you know, Ed or someone else will say, oh, blah, 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 and I'm like, oh, all right, I got it.
So it's a fine line, though, this sort of discussion thing. It's a little, let me talk to, if you don't mind, let me talk to Andrew, and let's see how it would be in terms of my, what this is meant to be, and how it is in the book, per se, and involve, because it doesn't add a group to him, they have to kind of involve. But also, I don't mind doing it the way I've been doing it. But it, but what I wanted more, where it comes today, and if we can, we can back to this, if I had one holdout, per se, and everyone else, everyone else is totally fine with it.
Well, that's...
Unequivocally, it comes to the board.
Well, Ed's bringing up the point that you...
You could have stolen.
I don't care who it is.
You might not have focused in on an issue that somebody else caught.
That's right. Like, for instance, I really wasn't focused at all today on that one and a half-story shed, that that was going to come up here and be the main topic of interest.
Yeah, I think one person has even any inkling it comes to the board.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, by the way, I always address the questions or concerns, as you guys know.
Yeah, and you, and you always provide so much information, and it's, it's great, but I, sometimes when I read those decisions and I have questions or whatever, it feels like I'm up here alone, kind of in a vacuum, making a decision.
Definitely.
Well, sometimes I feel like I'm being hypercritical, too.
Right.
I'm looking for something.
Right.
Well, I suppose you're supposed to be doing that.
You'd avoid that from anywhere else.
So we can move away with the one person holdout, then it comes to the board.
The other thing is, the seventy-two hours, I know we've discussed this odd, noisy, it's not enough. I mean, the other, once you send it on a Friday, and again, I'm not blaming you, but it was a Friday, it happened to be July fourth, you counted Monday as a day, and, you know, that's...
But then you have a weekend.
I'm aware. It's just not an, you know, I could be traveling, you know, whatever, we're all busy. We're all busy.
I thought we did, I thought it was one week, like, one, I thought...
No, so many cars.
I think so many cars is not enough.
I think this is a very user-friendly board.
Yeah.
For the town of Nantucket. And the fact that the applicants are all in a hurry to see if they can get approval on the administrator's basis is not a shock to me at all.
No.
Or anyone else.
No.
I also feel like, though, every, when I do get an email from you, if I've missed it, like, I'm like, oh, my God, I, how much time do I have to do this?
That's why I resented.
Yeah, because oftentimes I forget. I remember I see it coming through.
I sent it coming in Friday, and you guys have a busy weekend, of course I resented Monday. Hey, FYI, I don't get, I know we're coming into a holiday. That wasn't meant to, like, get back.
No, I know that, but, you know, again...
My office was closed on Monday. Like, we weren't, we didn't work on Monday.
Yeah, but you would have come back to the email Tuesday, which is going to remind her.
Wednesday.
No, I didn't work, I didn't work till Thursday.
My God, I like that job.
But I mean, I'm just, I'm just saying, like, I'm just saying, like, I saw it and didn't read it, but...
Yeah, because it takes ti, it's not a function of just reading the email either. You have to then look at it.
Right, and think about it.
It's one thing to just read an email, hey, Ed, you want to go to dinner tonight? Yeah, that I can respond to quickly.
And what, what happens is, you're kind of glancing at it during the work, while you're at work.
Yeah.
Right, so you put it in the, to do later list, and...
All right, now, five business days, is that sufficient?
It's better than seventy-two hours.
Yeah, five business days, I think, is good. Because then if it's on a Friday, you're not counting Saturday and Sunday.
Oh, without question.
She wasn't counting the weekends anyway, were you?
Okay, so, no, I don't count the weekends. No, I'm not expecting all the weekends. All right, so we're now going from seventy-two hours to five business days. Do we need that in the minutes table?
Terry's saying, kidding.
Not the weekends and not the holidays.
Yeah.
It's been a long meeting.
Your office is closed.
No, no, I know, I'm just saying, like, I'm just saying, it's a little...
I need to bring booties next time.
That's an adaptation, I know.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know, and I did see it. What?
There's a coat up there.
I was going to put my feet under your legs, it's so cold.
I was going to go up and get that coat so many times, I was like, I'm just, I'm going to just wrap that stranger's coat around my ass.
It's freezing.
What?
All right, so one more order of business, appointment of chair. No, no, Terry, that's cold-blooded.
I nominate Ed.
No, I would like to nominate Lisa.
No, I won't do it. I'll resign. I swear to God, I will. I don't, I don't want to do it.
You think I don't want to?
You're very good at it. I would not be good at a chair.
What about Michael? He was an excellent chair.
I've done my time.
I bet you would be an awesome chair, Michael.
I think Susan would be a good chair.
No, I don't want to share.
Susan's got the skills.
I think so, too.
Yeah, Susan has the skills. I don't have the skills.
Is that a nomination?
No, I can't do it.
Why not? I didn't want to do it when I started.
I have two tiny little kids that need my attention all the time.
My wife is very needy. She needs a lot of attention.
What about you?
It's a bike that needs all the attention.
I don't care.
Didn't know Rachel was pregnant again.
Susan, if Edward promises to lend a hand whenever you need one...
No.
Babysitting.
Babysitting, Friday nights. No.
I'd put him...
Jeff there? Oh, he's at all today.
I'm already overextended, I can't, I can't.
Well, yeah, we convinced you to join again.
And I mean, because also, because I, actually, I, it's not that I don't want to do it, I, maybe at some point in the future, I would entertain it, but I know that you put in a lot of work, Ed, behind the scenes that, that we, you know, I know from...
Yeah, I can tell.
Yeah, so I just, I don't, I don't want to shortchange that.
Right.
And I don't have the time to do it.
The other thing is, you can appoint somebody to run the entire meeting and still be here. You're allowed to do that.
Oh, Michael.
No, I'm just saying, you know, you're busy, and you just don't have time to do the work at home.
Well, it's not, it's not running the meeting, of course, it's calling Mass Housing, it's calling Ed, it's doing everything else to try to follow up on some of the stuff. I mean, it is, you know, I wouldn't mind if somebody else takes that burden at some point.
Why you have a clerk?
I'm surprised we don't have a vice chair.
You can get the rules changed and have co-chairs if you want.
Where's the list? Is there a list of...
It's on that last thing we sell.
It's just a chairman and clerk.
Who is the clerk?
You're the clerk.
Oh, Jesus. How did that happen? I could be the chairman, like, my husband's the chairman of the HGC, and not, he doesn't do very much. I mean, he's, he signs a bunch of stuff, but he doesn't do a lot of research. You're very good at it.
He runs a good meeting, though.
He does, yeah, he does. He runs a good meeting.
What? I signed mine already, gave it in.
I emailed mine, that's adequate, right?
Oh, am I supposed to do something, too?
Okay, I'll email those, you have...
You mean, you have to do, commit every year?
This is the ethics commitment, correct?
You just have to have signed it.
Who came up with that?
It's just getting so micromanated.
Yeah, who came up with this? I'm going to be a good citizen, it's like, it's ludicrous.
It is, but it's reality.
All right, great, but who, who...
It just reminds you that there are rules.
Because we never used to do this before, did we?
No.
I don't remember that.